Okay, and we are back, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Let's go through roll call one more time. Member Chang is not here. I am here. Member Webb. First Mike Tertier.
Here.
Member Mariano.
Here.
Secretary Ray.
Here.
Member Ferenger.
Here.
Here.
Treasurer Kim Koko Uemoto.
Sounds not working.
Number Uemoto, I think you're muted.
Sign language.
Just thumbs up, we're here. We see you. Second Vice Chair Mari Prina.
Present.
And member Data is up here. Thank you. Public safety reports Honolulu Fire Department, they submitted a report by email and they believe they're here as well.
Okay, can everyone hear? Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Captain Gibo. I'm with Pawaw Fire Station Number Two. This is our April statistics. We've had five nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and twenty-two activated alarms. We also responded to one hundred forty-three emergencies and ten vehicle pedestrian accidents. Our fire safety tip of the month is evacuation planning. Have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood due to an emergency. Visit fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Some also, some tips, leave early enough to avoid being caught in fire, smoke, or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relative's house at a low-risk area or a shelter or evacuation center. Take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. And I guess this is in regard to, I guess, those Maui wildfires and just people in Hawaii, just to be prepared. Does anyone have any questions?
Board member questions. A member Uemoto, Treasury Uemoto? Still can't hear you.
Yeah, she can go chat, but maybe have her get out and re- come back in.
Yeah, or turn off video.
Yeah. Okay, still not working. It's okay. Do you want to drop your question in the chat, Treasury Uemoto?
I think she sounds like she can hear us, but probably the mic is pretty.
That's good.
Or, okay, how about this? How about you just call me and then we can put your speaker?
There is no little speaker icon next to Kim Koko's name on the screen.
I don't see it. Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, while we're waiting for Treasurer Uemoto, board members, anyone else have a question? A member Mariano?
Yeah, a quick question. On the final response that's going down some of these roads, I've noticed in District One, in this area here, and District Two area, I noticed that, you know, we've narrowed the roads. And so wondering if that's hindering your progress while responding to not just fire, but medical emergency?
Okay, yeah, that's a very, that's a very good question. Actually, we do have reports from our chief and from our Ops Office as to where roads will be closed and which is the best response route and where we should avoid. Unfortunately, sometimes we may not have a choice because that may be our only access. And from our operations department, they just say, hey, just drive with due diligence and care. And just remember that we need to share the road with the public also. So we just try our best and, and basically try and share the road. But at the same time, you know, it is an emergency response and we try to get there as safely and quickly as possible. I'm not sure if that, that answers your question.
Yeah, yes, it did. But that was a good, nice, political, correct answer. My, my question really is, you know, with all these narrowing of the roads that we have, and it's continuing to happen, maybe you could take the statistic as far as how is it impeding your, your progress getting from trying to get the call to the response?
Okay, yeah, so to answer that question also, when we, every incident that we respond to, we, we, everything is tracked and it's tracked by time, yeah, our response time and our travel time. And if there is any kind of anomaly that I guess is out of the ordinary, like, like our response times are taking a little bit longer than normal, we will, we actually get emails about it, yeah, and we can actually check those statistics. And this is because of our standards of cover, we need to respond and get to see in a certain period of time in a urban area.
Yeah, and if I could, just one more, Chair. You know, we've added additional bike lanes, and then there's these white pylon things that they put alongside. But one, I'll talk about that later. There's a bunch of them that's broken that they just put up. But is that barrier that's supposed to protect the bike lane hindering your access to a site particularly closer to the apartment complex or condominiums?
It, it may hinder like where we park the truck, but we still can get to our destination at a, at a fairly close enough distance, yeah. And we understand that, you know, we need to share the road with everyone, yeah. It's not just, you know, the fire trucks is the biggest truck, so, you know, we get priority, you know, it's, it's not only that, so. As, as one of the busiest stations, you know, in the, in the, I guess, the Honolulu area, our station two is, and no one's really ever complained about having access because of those baller shadows, plastic bike lanes, or those dantions that they put up in the middle of the road. Okay, thank you. Okay, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Treasury Uemoto?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Sorry for that. So you mentioned the Lahaina fires, and I think I might have raised this question before, I'm not sure, but if there were a fire in our district, say it started around King Street, you know, we do have some, like right below King Street, there's a lot of one-story and then two-story walk-ups, and some of the walk-ups are old homes that were put onto cinder blocks. And so if there was fire and Maoko to Makai winds, and it was heavy and burning and trees are burning, it could spread really quickly. Do we have the kinds of sirens, you know, that people are complaining didn't go off during the Lahaina fires? Do we have those sirens? And would we, would those be activated to warn people that there's a quick spreading fire in our district?
Okay, that's a, that's a great question. I personally cannot, I guess, authorize, I, I could probably recommend to, to our chief to get in contact with DEM to sound those alarms. And the, I, I, I actually went to Lahaina, yeah. I was actually, I actually volunteered, and I was actually chosen as one of the first group of HFD guys to go up and assist the Lahaina Fire Department with the, the, actually like the second and the third day as far as the cleanup and the mop-up and stuff like that. And like here, here in, in town, yeah, it's a little bit different as far as our geographical layout versus Lahaina. I'm not saying that it, it couldn't happen, but on that side of the island is, is kind of, I guess, the geography layout is very similar to that of like, maybe like Nanakuli Valley or, or Wainai or, or Makaha Valley, where, you know, there is a lot of brush and there is a lot of big open lots and there is potential, yeah. And you know what, what, what they went through was unparalleled, yeah. I mean, there's, it, it's, it's, I, I, I just feel that it's such a unfortunate incident, yeah. And it was like the perfect storm with, with the winds, the direction, how it came through the valley, down the mountains, and it was like right there in front of Lahaina, yeah. And I'm not sure if you, you guys had a chance to see it or see some of the videos of it, but it's, you know, we, we do have contingencies in plan, and I know what our response in certain areas during high winds now, we send multiple companies versus just a single company now, yeah. Sometimes they would respond more than one truck, just in case something like this does happen. And especially on these, you know, higher wind days, yeah, like anything over twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, they start thinking about, you know, sending multiple units, yeah. And we've all been trained and we've all been told that, you know, send the resources right away. If you feel that it's, it's getting a little out of hand, just call, just call right away, yeah, as far as our department goes. And like for the Honolulu Fire Department, yeah, we're a lot more, I guess, we're luckier and we're staffed a lot heavier than the Lahaina stations. You know, we have, you know, like thirty more companies, so we have, we have extra resources that can be called. I guess a little bit more, I, I'm not saying that Maui, you know, could, could, could use that help, but here, here in Honolulu, like especially like, like in town, yeah, I mean, we got fire stations and in, in, in a matter of minutes, you're gonna have three or four trucks there, yeah, versus Maui, you might have only one truck. And, you know, and like I said, yeah, that was just such a weird perfect storm because prior to Lahaina catching fire, from, from what I was told is, they were actually battling like nine or ten house fires up in the Kula area. So the resources that were, should have been down there was actually further up the mountain on, on, up Kula side, yeah. So even more so their, their response was a little bit more delayed because of all, all, all the house fires that got lost on that initial fire, yeah. And then, then I guess it kind of spread down towards Lahaina.
Yeah.
And then by then, everybody was in kind of the wrong area. And by the time they got there, it's, I mean, Mother Nature does what Mother Nature wants to do, yeah. I mean, we can, we all try our best to, you know, to protect the public, but, you know, sometimes, you know, but I, I think that's why they will probably implement. I know Maui did it already, like they were sounding sirens after this Lahaina brush fire on any flare-ups or any big brush fires that they thought could get out of control due to the winds.
Got it. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for your service every day, but thank you for heading over to Lahaina to help with that relief effort as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasury Uemoto. Any other board members, questions? Community members? Okay. Hi, Belaje from BIKI.
Yeah, a question for the fire gentleman. What'd you say the percentage of your calls are traffic-related versus fire-related, like traffic injuries?
Oh, I, I would say we run approximately seventy percent of our calls as medical-related. As far as traffic-related go, it would probably be, I would say maybe five to ten percent of our calls as far as traffic-related.
So then, so then fire is twenty to thirty percent only?
Maybe, yeah. Of various forms of fires that, you know, we have a lot of rubbish fires, a lot of nuisance, a lot of overcooked food fires at home, or we have a lot of activated alarms, false alarms and, and real ones, unfortunately. Yeah, I, I would say because of our discipline, we're kind of spreading out, I guess, we're not just doing fire response nowadays, you know, we do a lot more like haz, hazmat and a lot more rescue, so the amount of calls is just, our scope is just getting wider and wider.
Okay, so your actual fire responses are probably ten percent or less?
Yeah, I agree to fifteen percent, yeah. I would say about that much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Todd Belaje for that question. Any other questions? Okay, Honolulu Fire Department, thank you for that. Appreciate you being here tonight. And before we move on, the Friday member, Launia Chang, who came at six twelve PM, and we have Dylan Buck in place of Spencer Johnson tonight as a neighborhood assistant, so thank you for being here this evening. Moving on, Honolulu Police Department, Lieutenant Segusio, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I was having trouble with my mute button over here. Lieutenant Segusio, representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Responsibility. Hello, everyone. Chair Lee, Major Okimoro, and Captain Henry Roberts send their greetings to you all. Hope every, everyone is doing fine. So without further ado, I'm gonna go into the stats for the past month of March. So motor vehicle thefts for March was twenty-one. Previously to that, also twenty-one. Burglaries were five, previous was six. Thefts were one hundred and twelve, previous month was one oh five. UMVs or car break-ins was twenty, previous to that twenty-one. Assaults, twenty, previous month twenty-four. Sex assaults were three, previous month was one. Graffiti cases were two, previous month was one. Drug offense-related cases were seven, previous to that was thirteen. Total cost for your area, four thousand and fifteen. Previous to that, the month of February was four thousand and fifty-two. So, let's see. So I just wanted to report several things. So there's an initiative that was started, you know, in regards to Alamoona Beach Park. Contrary to popular belief, it is not a dog-friendly park. So, you know, due to numerous and continued complaints from the general public in regards to dogs being in the park, we've started to, you know, put up more signage. There's also Mrs. Bo words at the beginning of every, you know, entrances on the Kakako side and on the Waikiki side of the beach park. We're also starting to get some QR codes so that they can real allocate them to the app so that they can learn all the rules for the particular park. So just, we, we just want them to realize that it is a sizable violation in regards to having dogs in the park and our HPD bike detail, as well as our ATVs and fourth watch are gonna be doing enforcement. So we've done the warning phase already, so we're into the law enforcement phase, so citations are being issued at this point in time. There are other friend, dog-friendly parks within the area. You just need to go into the city and county website to find those parks, yeah. So leading into that, we're gonna talk about the safety tip for the month of April. It's since the month of April is distracted driving month, that's what we're gonna talk about. So we're just asking our community members to put down their cell phones and keep their eyes on potential hazards while they're driving. Due to spring arriving, there's more construction and more pedestrian traffic in the area, so we're asking them to use their due diligence while driving around. Other than that, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time so I can take answers or take more questions from the board and the public attendees.
Thank you. Now, to your show. Board members, questions? Member Mariano?
Lieutenant Segusio, thanks. I just wanted to follow up the same question that I had for the fire, Fire Department, regarding impediments hindering your response. You know, the other day I was coming down Pensacola and, you know, the large amount of traffic, you know, because of that traffic congestion that's closer from the street that goes two streets up before Kapialani, you know, with the traffic light going red and particularly peak period. I made it kind of a hindrance. I saw HPD trying to respond, and they were coming from Kapialani, coming up from Peetboy, coming down Pensacola. That created such a congestion aspect, and just wondering what impact is that having? Because as I talked about before, they're looking at narrowing Pensacola, with the fire EMS and now HPD. I have a concern regarding that. Could you see if that's something that, that's hindering your responses?
Again, Mr. Mariano, very good question in regards to that. So we, we experience some situations, yeah. So I, I can speak for a certain particular areas like the Baratania area, especially in the Chinatown district area. There was a narrowing of the lanes, so just realize this, some of the lanes are only ten feet wide. Obviously, these OTS buses are a little bit wider or at, at that upper fringe of the ten feet. So we do often have involuntary contact with city buses and vehicles. Usually those side mirrors, obviously, are, are the ones that are getting affected the most. But with the narrowing of the lanes, yes, most definitely, it kind of hinders us, especially during peak traffic. We've often, and I've, I've worked during, too, so we've had to ask the dispatcher to call back callers sometimes to say that, you know, we're gonna be a little bit late on the response due to traffic and just because of the, the whole narrowing of the lanes and stuff like that. So yes, it does affect us, but we, we figure out ways, right? I mean, we're police, so we try to go down routes that are not heavily traveled to get to our locations. But yes, it does cause a trickle effect of, you know, hindering us from responding well, especially with HFD. I know HFD responded already, but yeah, their trucks are even, you know, slightly even wider than OTS buses, so it does, it does cause a hindrance sometimes.
Madam Chair, just follow up. Again, District Two, they narrowed down Cook Street. They put bike lanes on each side of Cook Street. You know, I'm not sure, maybe I was not present when they presented that to the board, but now it doesn't make sense that they have two bike lanes wide enough to go, you know, up and down on each side in Cook Street, and now it's, now it's going from four lanes down to two lanes, and then you have businesses that's there doing peak periods. That becomes a hindrance, and, you know, again, this is another aspect of sure people will move aside, but when they move aside and there's no place to go, that creates a problem. I think that's a concern. So I understand the need that we need to do this. I brought it up at the Waldo Metropolitan Plan at one point, that it's something that we need to probably look at. Yes, we want to help our first responders so they can take care of our constituents, our family members in order.
Yes, yeah, so in regards to those bike lanes, yeah, so it's all of a trickle effect also, yeah. So once you put those bike lanes in, obviously, the roadway's lanes for traffic for vehicles is pushed to the middle. Just realize this, sometimes when we respond to calls, we're not gonna be trying to look for parking on especially priority one calls. We're just gonna pull up and then we're gonna find the best location for us to respond that, and we're just gonna leave the car there and, 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 and address the situation. So with that being said, obviously, the initiative has been in the most recent past to turn Kakako into a bike and pedestrian-friendly location, right? So that's why they're doing that. And that is why they're starting to put up those no, no-turn lanes, no, you know, those no right turns on red signs. And that is to alleviate involuntary contact with bicyclists and motor vehicles, right? So with that being said, it, it, it's coming. We just have to get used to the new initiative of turning that particular area, because you see all the construction going on. But we'll mitigate it as we go along the way. The signs is the first sign that we're gonna, you know, move towards that way with the no right turn on red.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Treasury Uemoto, and Member Ferenger, and then Mr. Todd Belaje from Lake Shore, wait.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Lieutenant Segusio, we saw you at the Sarirera rally. And then last meeting, I think Karen Chung of the Ward Village Moms did a presentation for the Neighborhood Board. And she actually wanted me to ask questions, and then I think you had left by the time I got around to that, and so I'm gonna, do you mind? And it was in reference to a bill that both Karen and, and Chevy, Sarirera's mom, had been working on. And one of the solutions that they saw that they felt were, were being ignored was simply, because what they understood is that when the police pull over a driver for whatever, you know, traffic infraction, and then they pull them over and discover that the driver is not, is not a licensed driver, for whatever reason. It's not like they don't have it on them, but they just literally are unlicensed or have their license revoked, but they do, they are not a holder of a license. And I think it's our understanding that when you look them, if they give you their name and another kind of ID, you can determine whether, whether they're a licensed driver who just doesn't have their license on them, and whether they're an unlicensed driver. Is that, is that true?
Ah, yes, absolutely. So it is, so it's, it's, we call it D-Wall, so driving without a license, right? So obviously, there's other situations, right? Never had a license, had a license, it got revoked, they never renewed it, or same thing, right? It expired, they never renewed it, causes them to be D-Wall. So depending on the severity in regards to the D-Wall offense, so just realize, a, a lot of officer discretion is used. So if the guy or this person is pulled over and then they're, we, obviously, they can give us a name, we can, we can make sure our computer system, and we find out they're unlicensed, but if they're unlicensed because their license has expired, or they just never renewed it, or they moved back to the state and they just haven't gotten a license, you know, we have some discretion or leeway in regards to that, right? I mean, we, we can cite, we can just give a verbal warning, but it, it is an actual arrestable offense. So now, we can also check if this person is, is driving without a license and has been, been pulled over numerous times, right? And then now, maybe that discretion shouldn't be used as much, right? I think at that point, we should utilize the enforcement side where we should be making an arrest at this point in time. So with that being said, yeah, each officer has their own discretion, discretionary powers or rules while, while making these decisions on the road. But that is a very good point. I would be interested in, in seeing that, that proposed House bill.
Right, so that's what her concern, I think their concern was mainly that the, that the, the police officer can write a citation for D-Wall. But there is no, even if they can see in their record that there's a lot of incidences of D-Wall, that they let the driver get back in the car and drive away, which feels like you're, you know, you're basically, it feels like an endorsement of that kind of behavior. So they were trying to amend, and now it's too late, because the bill has gotten to where it is unamended. But they were trying to amend it so that there would be less discretion on the police officer who wrote the, the citation for D-Wall to allow them to get back in the car, but instead they were trying to say, well, no, the police can't watch them drive off. The police has to make sure the car is parked in a safe area so that a licensed driver can take it. Or, or to have it, you know, or begin the procedure of having, do you have the information for whose car it is? Because rarely, rarely is the car owned by an unlicensed driver. Usually, the car that an unlicensed driver is driving is, doesn't belong to the, the, the person who's driving without a license. Do you think, I mean, and are you guys able to check it? Look, look at the, the car, at the license plate, and make that determination that this isn't even their car? And then are you, do you have access to the database that will allow you to contact the, the owner of the car and say, hey, you're letting this unlicensed driver drive your car? Is there that information in, from your police car that you can access and have that communication?
Absolutely. So we have, we have a very robust database. We can, we can find out a lot about, a lot of things. That's why, you know, law enforcement is very vetted, it's a very vetted occupation. But getting back to the question, so with, with that, with, with what you were saying is perfectly understood, right? I mean, if this guy's not licensed, why are we allowing this person to drive away? I don't know about if it's driving. So just realize this, if there's another licensed driver within the vehicle, we're gonna make them, you know, switch out and then have that licensed driver drive, drive the vehicle. But then totalitarian circumstances, peak traffic are, one of the, one of our jobs as, as law enforcement is to propagate traffic, especially during peak hours. Because obviously, even a, even a, even a traffic stop can hinder traffic for miles. So we have to take totalitarian circumstances. There's a very limited tow wagons that are available to us islandwide to coming at the vehicle. There's a very limited storage locations to store these vehicles in that regard. And, and, and let's not even talk about driving without license. Let's talk about driving without insurance. I mean, that is also a violation that, that is a court offense that, you know, That, you know, people that uh don't have insurance have to go to court for. So sometimes the discretion is is utilized because of the totality of the circumstances. Do we really wanna wait an hour for a tow wagon on a freeway during peak hour, uh, because this guy's uh driving without a license? Okay, yes, maybe, um, you know, we might not wanna do that, because, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna back up traffic for miles, we're gonna get numerous complaints. Um, the tow truck is not gonna be able to get here, cause he's, he's, he's not gonna be able to get through traffic.
Right.
Um, in that, in that sense, I think we we gotta use some sort of discretion.
Right.
But private mode, the guy's got five citations already, he's showing you five other citations for driving without D-Wall. I think that's an arrest and 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 we should tow his vehicle uh in that, in that case, right? So I think we need to know the totality of the circumstances, but that's a very fantastic bill to try to bring about, yeah. I mean, that would possibly get more people to get their license and get insurance.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, President Umodo, Member Ferengi.
Hi, Lieutenant, thank you for being here. I just wanted to ask a quick question, and it may not be something that you can answer, it may actually be more for the board. I'm just wondering really quickly if there's ever been any attempts to have an animal area or dog park area over at Alamoana Park.
That is a fantastic question. So realize this, uh, a lot of people bring their animals or their dogs. Uh, I consider some, some people consider, they are family members, right, to the beach park. Uh, as long as, you you know, some, um, you know, in the past, we weren't really enforcing it due to the fact that, you know, they were very responsible with their animals. But I think in the recent past, I think there's been irresponsible owners of of, you know, family member pets. Uh, where one, especially, they don't pick up the the poop uh for for these animals, and then uh people end up stepping in it. So that's why we get a lot of complaints. We've also been getting some dog bite issues. Uh, I will, I actually responded to one dog bite, uh, where a girl got her, her face got bit. And the only reason the case wasn't made was it was a, it was a family, other family member's dog that had actually bit her. But there's been instances, we've got calls where dogs running freely on the sand. I mean, it it's kind of unnerving, you're trying to enjoy the beach, and then, you know, another, you know, uh, person's uh dog is running around and kicking up sand. It it is sometimes a nuisance. So I think that's why it it came to that uh fruition, where we're starting to do more enforcement, because we get more uh numerous complaints. If they decided to cordon off a particular of Alamoana Beach Park, that would be something that you, as the community members, would uh go ahead and ask the city to do, DFM. Uh, to do, um, there, you know, there's a lot of space uh towards the Maoka side of the beach park. Uh, right across Pecoy that they possibly could do that for, but at this point in time, it's not a dog-friendly park. Uh, we've, we've been asked by the city to uh conduct enforcement in that area.
Just wanna, I just wanna ask one more thing. So what about like companion, excuse me, um, comfort animals and specifically assistant assistance animals? Are they still cited?
A very good question. So that, as long as they can, um, so just realize this, in regards to that uh situation. HIPAA violation uh could be incurred, right? Uh, as law enforcement, we are only allowed to ask them two questions. Is is the dog a service animal and what does it do? Pretty much, that's all we can ask, right? And if people have the answer for that, um, we we tend to uh, you know, fall on the side of, uh, err on the side of safety. And and consider it a a service animal for that person, right? But let's be, uh, let's not be naive. Uh, there's a lot of people in our community that utilize that. Um, I wouldn't say loophole, but use that law uh to their advantage, and they put, you know, service animal leashes and um, you know, service animal um. Uh, harnesses on the dog or on the animal to say that it is a service animal, but they're in actuality not, yeah. But with that HIPAA, so you see the conundrum, right? We can ask, we can ask them if it is, if they tell us it is, then we gotta take it for face value at that point.
Thank you very much for answering the questions and being so thorough. Really appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Member Ferengi. Any other questions from the board? Community members, okay. Thank you, Lieutenant Seguchio, for answering our questions this evening. Appreciate it.
All right, you guys have a great meeting.
Thank you. Time is now six forty PM. We're moving on to Board Business, three point one, any nominations to fill Sub District One? Being none, we are going to put this back on our agenda for May, so anyone out there or community members out here, if you are in Sub District One. Please consider being on our board, since we've had this vacancy for a few months now. Uh, three point two, approval of the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes, board members, if you have any edits, questions?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, anyone oppose? Okay, board meeting, uh, minute, minutes approved, thank you, board. Moving on to um reports from our March fourteenth and April sixteenth Action Committee meetings. We have our committee vice chair and board vice chair, Dyson Chi.
Whoa, um, so very quick, I'll keep this short, so that way we can stay on track, uh. Committee meeting, uh, we went over the draft resolution that I think most of us have had a chance to take a look at, kind of helped pitch in. Um, regarding uh unsheltered neighbors and integrated safe zones. Um, if you have not had a chance to check your email yet, uh, for board members, we have uh updated that draft. At our last Action Committee meeting, we made a considerable edits to it. So please, when you have a chance, do take a look at it. Um, it's on a Google Doc that you can see on your phone or your computer. Uh, and you can either edit directly, add comments directly onto that doc, or you can make a copy of it, download it as a Word doc, if that's what's more comfortable to you. Make your own edits there and then bring it to the Na- Action Committee meeting. So we will not be voting, as you can tell on the agenda, we won't be voting on this yet, because this uh draft does need more editing. But after the next Action Committee meeting, when we can go through a lot of those edits and kind of put our heads together. Hopefully, with the, it's at the May uh regular board meeting, we'll be able to have a resolution that we can vote on. So that's the resolution. Um, as for other items that we also talked about. We did go over areas for, that we can focus on for public education. One of those actions is to have a table at the Kakako Farming Market, representing uh our. Alamoana Kakako Neighborhood Board there, so that way we can have some community engagement and outreach. Have an opportunity for people who are around in the community to come up to us, ask us any questions they have, share their concerns. One of the ideas that was floated, I want to say, uh, Action Committee Chair Davis came up with the idea. Was that, for example, we can be at the table and we can ask people to bring, to like share, you know, what's one concern that you have? Or what's one thing that you want, you know, elected officials to know? Because we do serve as a really nice conduit for people to be able to share their concerns with elected officials, cause you don't all have a good meeting where. All the representatives of the community are all together at the same time. Um, on top of that, we are going to need to talk about our messaging and materials. We very briefly covered that at the Action Committee meeting, but we're going to cover that more at the next one. But we talked about what's, how do we kind of encourage engagement with this board, uh, really inspiring the next generation? I say that like I'm not part of the next generation, I am part of the next generation. But inspiring uh my generation to be more involved with the Neighborhood Board, to be kind of civically empowered. So a couple of ideas that were floating around was to engage more dialogue with McKinley High School right across the street. Um, to encourage them to, for example, field students who are parts of their civics and democracy class. To volunteer with the board to attend, you know, our meetings and events. Um, possibly even collaborating with McKinley. To have a, for example, summer intern where a student can help to manage our social media. Um, especially given how savvy a lot of people in my generation are with that sort of stuff. So those were the main things that we covered. Uh, we didn't really have discussion on item four on that agenda, which is on affordable housing and rent. Um, just because of time constraints, but all of these items are on the May Action Committee agenda, so hopefully we will get a chance to talk more about them. And that is my report. Uh, did I miss anything or any questions anyone has?
Board members? Maybe, okay, oh, um, President Umodo.
Sorry, I just want to clarify something else, cause we are being recorded. Um, actually, because it may be a violation, violation of Sunshine Law. For all the board members to be working on a live document, we, um, I think that we determined that there was gonna be. An unamendable um, a document. And then I think one person was gonna be the recipient of any suggestion changes, cause you can do that with the Sunshine Law. Uh, we can all communicate with one person, um, but we can't um work off the same document. Because in theory, I think it might be considered um serial, um, a serial communication. Um, secondly, I think what we wanted to was for everyone to look at this document. Um, including, you know, um HPD, um, different um stakeholders who might be interested. I think everyone was gonna be welcome. That's why we have an a public um folder on the Google Docs. Is that correct, Dyson?
Yes, uh, the document is viewable by anyone in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, and thank you for the clarified, clarification on Sunshine Law. I'll go ahead and amend the editing access, that way um only myself can edit. And then since um Action Committee Chair Davis is out of town, if you have your own edits, uh, please send them to me.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, we're getting this interpretation from where? The Neighborhood Commission? On Sunshine Law?
Well, my interpretation is exactly what she said.
Yeah.
You guys can't work. Everything you guys knew should be public meetings. Kind of like playing the game of telephone.
Well, understand, but uh since we have a standing committee, which is a community action committee. And uh it's well advertised, it's well documented, it's also online, so we have people attend in person. And online, just like this, you know, they're open to have uh whatever input that they.
The committee members, if it's coming out of the committee, only they can work on it, you can't open it up to the rest of the board, just because that's the public meeting. Cause you can't have all your board members at a community meeting anywhere. That would be violations of Sunshine Law.
I think part of the issue is because of reading document, if we are, if it's on the agenda and we're all editing it at the same time.
Well, I I would wanna push back, Madam Chair, and have the Neighborhood Commission to look at it again. Cause my interpretation of the Sunshine Law is slightly different, and that's the only reason why, you know, I didn't object earlier. Uh, so if there's, if we can get the, maybe someone, the legal counsel, to kind of take a look at that. Cause one of the things about the Action Committee is at the lower level, we have majority of the board members present. If they're not present in person, they're online, or or they're, it could be excused. And we have members from the community that come out and provide input, and so the discussion is open and thin. And then, again, it's just a working draft. And before it goes to the final draft, then I say, you know, we can go ahead and and do quality control. For a single point, but I don't wanna get into a debate now, but I just asked that Madam Chair, that we have the Neighborhood Commission to read, look at that. So that we can ensure that we can move forward.
Sorry, if I, if I may, um, as Action Committee Vice Chair, um, can I ask, um, I know, I'm sorry, it's extra work, but can I ask uh the NCO to double check that? And then whatever, um. The final verdict on this, and we'll follow whatever um interpretation of Sunshine Law.
It might take some time for like a corporation council response, but if we can discuss this in office and give you an official response from us, but I did wanna ask. Are you saying you have more than your forum members attend the Action Committee?
I'm not sure about the last one, cause I couldn't be there, but the.
That's, that's the first step, is if that's happening, then that's a violation of Sunshine. And I can show you that in the Neighborhood Plan, a committee is supposed to be less than the number of forum. So you guys have eleven here, forum is six, you can have up to five board members as a part of that committee.
The last committee meeting was less than four.
Perfect, let's keep it that way.
Okay.
And then those people can work on this resolution if it's coming out of the Action Committee.
Okay, I think uh save time, I will also back with NCO to make sure that we're aligned with Sunshine Law. Yeah, either way, um, please work on the edits on your own for the time being and send it to me. I'm more than happy to make sure that everyone edits, everyone that edits will be dropped the next Action Committee.
I think we should wait till we get confirmation from the Neighborhood Council.
Just the last thing is, if it's coming out of the committee, so it can be, um, all those board members that are part of the committee, they're the originators. But then when it comes to the full board meeting like this for approval, that's when everybody gets to provide any edits or comments. So there can be live edits made during the meeting, but you're probably doing it at the same time, because you know what, the three hour meeting can be focused on that resolution. So just so we're clear, everybody will have a say. We'll just go through it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's great clarification, like, our board is so active, but we all wanna be involved with all the committees. And I wanna make sure that we're within compliance, but also I, I still want the opportunity. That Action Committee, and it's two, that's one thing that should go on, so we'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Dylan.
Can you just clarify, I think still can see that the draft version of the public will be available?
It's viewable to the public, it should be somewhere on NCO website.
Uh, the Google Drive, because it's a draft, right?
Google for.
Yeah, on our, on our official website, we post the adopted version, we don't post drafts, cause we don't like to be confusing. Um, but yeah, the board has a Google Drive, which is public, I think it's on the agenda or the minutes. Um, yeah, I see it right here, it's tiny, you're on it. So it's on the agenda, it happens in the back, but that's where you guys can see all the board information.
And Chair, can we ask again, because we have some things, particularly this resolution that we're working on, which we think is very important. That uh we get the the Neighborhood Council to go back and ask the question, give clarification, and provide us that guidance.
Like, that's something, as soon as tomorrow's a chair, we can pass it on to all of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan, thank you, board members. Um, moving on, three point four, attendance at other meetings. Okay, three point five, a social event idea from Member Beni Mariano.
Well, based on what I heard just now, I think we need to kind of stop this initiative. Well, why we put this on the agenda, is I was just thinking, you know, there was an initiative that was brought up at the. Community Action Committee, to have a booth at the Kakako Market. But at the same time, you know, we had numerous uh constituents come to our meeting, and they would like to meet members of. The Neighborhood Board, and also, we, as a Neighborhood Board, uh, you know, if we can pick a date. Or once, once a year, or maybe twice a year, it's something. That we can have what you call a, for lack of a better word, a social event, or maybe like a townhouse, or, you know, open house. Where we sit down, you know, we can meet our constituents, talk one-on-one, uh, so that uh we can meet them, they can meet us. At the same time, gather their inputs, because at the board meetings, or if they can't make it through our, you know, Action Committee meeting. They're, they're not, we're not able to hear all of the concerns that the community has. And so that's what we wanna do. That was the suggestion.
Dylan, would you be able to help us out with that? Like, can we be able to throw something that Member Mariano just mentioned?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I think, uh. For full details, um, send me all of your ideas and writing, and definitely we can really look at it. And then if you guys need some kind of funding, you can talk about that, we don't have a lot to offer at the moment. Uh, there's a lot of funds about to come out, so everybody's kind of gotta tighten their belt, uh, but we definitely are here to help. So let's talk about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just filling in today.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, the time is now six fifty-four PM, we have presentations, four point one, V E updates from Mr. Taduande, Executive Director of Bexaraway.
Aloha, thank you for um this time. Um, Chair Lee, I've uploaded a file. Do I um, do I share it, or do you, can you pull it up?
Could you say that one more time?
Sure.
Yeah.
Are you able to share your document?
Um, BIKI is approaching its seven, seven years of service. We've had over 15 million miles traveled by bicyclists powered by whatever they had for lunch that day, bananas, ulu, hamburgers, peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. And that was over 6 million trips. Kakaako is the number two highest trip generating area. So 30% of the BIKI trips are in Kakaako slash Alamoana. Waikiki is number one with 36%. Kakaako Alamoana is batting above its averages in the sense that it has only 26% of the stations. So you're doing very well. You're generating more trips than you have stations. What else? You're also gaining percentage. Last, in 2022, there were 27% of the trips in Kakaako and Alamoana. Now it's 30%. So that's, I, I would say that's indicative of all the protected bike lanes that are being built. Safer streets draw more people out of their cars. And as everyone knows, street parking is very, very difficult to find in your, in your district. 19% of our members, once they join BIKI, have sold their, sold a car in their household. So freeing up curb space for other drivers who can't cycle. In this year, 2024, the top, top four, four of the top 10 stations are in Kakaako Alamoana. And in the last seven years, the, the station down at Atkinson, down by the Alamoana Beach Park, that station has generated almost 270,000 trips. So and if you are able to view our data sheet that I gave you guys, there's some other data items there. Any questions on those, those key performance indicators?
First, Pleasure Chi.
Uh, thank you, Todd, for coming out and presenting. I'm curious to know, do you have a statistic on about how much CO2 emissions that impacts to? Just because that would be helpful to know, like basically because of these bike rides, this is how much CO2 emissions or how many, you know, cars basically you're removing.
Yes. Yeah, on the flyer I sent just last year, almost 2 million pounds of CO2 was avoided. So with BIKI, it's not mitigation. We're not having to plant trees or we're not having to do something. We're just avoiding their creation since the, the stations are powered by solar power.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, any other questions from board members? Member Chang?
Who's number one?
Oh, down on Seaside in Waikiki.
Any other?
You guys can do it.
Yeah, Todd, thanks for the, thanks for the statistics. Quick question. When, when this was first introduced many, many years ago, I think it was presented to the board, it was proposed that BIKI would be self-sufficient and that it will pay for itself. Is, is that still the case or is it something that the taxpayers need to supplement to keep BIKI going?
So the, the, the fares, so currently to, I guess, put an example, there's no direct subsidy from the city. So the city doesn't pay a dollar or $2 per ride for BIKI. All of the fares pay the operator for the call center and the, the maintenance and the repairs and such and the, the original equipment loan. We, the nonprofit, we don't get any fares, any revenue from the fares. It's only the businesses that donate to the system or, or public grants like, you know, we received a PPP fund during the COVID or tourism marketing. The, the example with the city bus, the city bus currently is typically below 20%. So if, if, if the, if the fare is a dollar, they're raising 20 cents of the dollar. So we're, we're definitely doing much better than the public bus.
So you're saying that BIKI is self-sufficient, that there's no need for tax supplement that you have to pay for?
No, we're in, we're, there's no, yeah, we're not. Any, we're not, it's just like, we operate like a nonprofit, any funds we raise. Yep. Okay.
Thank you. Secretary Rice?
Hi, thank you for being here, Todd. I have a couple of questions. One, who paid, are you paying rent? BIKI pay rent for the land where the bike racks are placed? Or is it donated by the city?
It's, it's donated by private, so every station, no, no, no station hosts, you know, Alexander Baldwin, Alamoana Center, the city, the state, no one pay, no one, it's like a bus stop. No one seeks rent for that station. It's a, it's like a community good, a park bench, a bus stop.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, not all BIKI stations are created equal, meaning there are not trash receptacles at each station. And I walk Kakaako Ward Village every day and there are a number of them where there's lots of water bottles on the ground, food wrappers, you name it. And they're, they accumulate by the BIKI stations. So something can be done, at least have a trash receptacle placed at each station, but then it has to be serviced too on a daily basis.
Correct. We do have crews go out weekly, if not daily, to stations. What you're also seeing is because the stations are in the, in the, in the parking lane, a lot of trash blows and collects at them from other locations.
I don't think so. I've seen.
But if, 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 if you have a.
So, no, I don't think.
If you, if you have a problem station, please, please, I can, I can give Kathleen Lee the phone number. I'll type it in the chat and please do call that in and we'll send someone out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Rice. Any other questions? Lord, Mandy? Okay, Mr. Todd Alonade, thank you for being here for BIKI updates.
I have a, I have one, one member update, Kathleen, Chair. We are, we are raising our rates in June. We haven't raised our Kamaaina rates since, since we started. So we are raising our rates to, to reflect inflation and also to purchase more bikes. COVID, the vandalism has destroyed about 200 bikes. And so we'll be replacing those with the fare increase. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Thank you for that update. Moving on, item 4.2, Honolulu Night Market, our Kakaako with Megan Shin or Summer Caster. Hi. Oh, yeah. Todd, could you stop sharing your screen? Thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead. No. Is it sharing? I'm even seeing anything.
We see a black screen.
Black screen. Okay. I did drop it on the, in the content folder in here. I don't know if that is accessible.
Saying the chat?
Yeah, it's next to the chat. I don't know. They just did a.
Yeah, they just updated.
Yeah, so now I'm like, I don't know where all these things are.
No worries.
Yo, while we're waiting for the presentation, is it possible you can talk?
Yeah, no problem. So I am Megan and I am from Ola Monoloomis. We're the marketing agency that works with our Kakaako, which is the planned community from Kamemis Falls. We are putting on the Honolulu Night Market again. We do it twice a year. So this one is going to be on June 8th, which is a Saturday. And it will be the same footprint that it typically is. So we'll be taking up, we'll be shutting the roads down on Awahke Street, Keavie Street and Coral Street. And that'll be from 5 to 10 PM. This year, we're really excited. I'm not sure if anyone's kind of seen the news about Best Pack, which is Festival of the Pacific. And basically they have this festival every four years. Hawaii is, this is the first time they're going to have that festival hosted here in Hawaii. So we're really excited to be one of 13, I believe, venues to host different delegations from across the Pacific Islands. So our entertainment and performance and fashion lineup for this particular night market is going to be from all delegations that are part of Best Pack. So that's really exciting to bring in a larger cultural element. We always try to infuse culture into all of our markets, but this is definitely going to be even more so because we have people from all over the world that will be here showing their different dances, performances, music, and then also fashion. And I can drop, I think I sent this over, so I don't know if anyone can see it, but there's a map in here as well, which everyone would be able to see the footprint. But it's the same one that we had previously. All residential parking and building driveways are going to remain accessible for usual. We don't want to inconvenience people more than they already will be with street closures. But we take safety very seriously for all of our events. So we do have HPD that we work with, City and County's Department of Transportation Services. We have the Honolulu Fire Department, which is who mans our first aid tents. And they basically will all be onsite and we are working very closely with them to ensure that parking is easy, accessible, people have directions. Obviously it does get very busy, so we'll be having additional security onsite to help manage the flow of crowd control as well as the beer gardens that we have onsite. Yeah. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, Megan, are you folks able to drop that freedom patient? I just don't want to, because you've worked on it. So I wanted to make sure people saw it. And if you're unable to share the screen, if there are links that we can click on, maybe we could share that.
Yeah, it's in the content folder. I don't know if that, I see BIKIs in there as well. It's in this, it says content on it. I don't know if you guys are able to see that and it's got like a download PDF.
Yeah, if I can share.
Thank you. Sorry. It wasn't letting me show it for whatever reason. Yeah, there we go.
Can you see it?
Yes. So yeah, basically I just quickly ran through all of this, but yeah, so that'll be our map for the event footprint, the blue. So on Keavie Street, we go from Pohukaina down to Awahke Street. And then on Awahke Street, we go from Keavie down to Cook. And then we take a small portion of Coral Street. But again, not blocking any driveways, residential areas. We do work with the businesses that do get impacted by the street closures to get approvals. And yeah, we're really excited for another great Honolulu Night Market. Wonderful. Thank you. Board members, questions? Hey, community. Megan, thank you for being here this evening and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.3, update on 150 Kapilani. The last update was on October 2023 to our Neighborhood Board and we had Mr. Isaiah Sato from RM Tau.
Hi Kathleen, can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me share my screen. Okay, can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you all for having me here again today. Appreciate the time. So again, my name is Isaiah Sato from RM Tau Corporation. And I just wanted to provide a brief update on the 1500 Kapilani development. So this project's been ongoing for about eight, eight years or so. So we actually came to the Neighborhood Board first in 2016 and then we came back late last year to give an update there. And I just wanted to provide a quick update on what happened since October last year to now on the project. So again, just introduction, so 1500 Kapilani is an approved mixed use project consisting of 109 affordable rental units for kupuna and one manager's unit. So this count increased from the last time and I'll get into that in the next few slides. There's 444 condo hotel units and six residential units. And there's also going to be 8,500 square feet of commercial space. So this project was approved at City Council back in 2017 there. So location map, so this slide has shows our location map. So just to kind of help orient yourself there, Keamuk is coming down the center of the screen there. And then Kapilani is on the left and right on this side. Our project site is here in green, so it's, this is the Walgreens building or the auto source lease there. And then the project site is between the Old Hild College Building as well as the Walgreens parking structure there. So the existing parking structure is going to be saved. So it's going to be developed on top of that, but the Hild College Building on the right side, we're going to demolish, remove that and then reconstruct that there. So again, Kapilani Boulevard is on the Makai side and on the Maka side is Makalua Street on the back. Okay, what I wanted to highlight today was our senior affordable kupuna rentals that we have. So this has been redesigned a bit since our last meeting, but we have this building here on the left is going to be the senior affordable rental. So this view is kind of standing above Lake Target or Alamoana Center side, looking kind of diagonal, diagonally Maka. But again, we have 109 affordable senior rental units, one manager's unit there. The units are all going to be studios and one bedrooms. I have the breakdown on the next slide. We're targeting kupuna ages 62 and older. So we're really hoping to get the retired seniors there that are on fixed incomes to this housing development there. And that's going to be targeted at 80% area median income and below. Again, that income level is set by HUD, the federal level there. And it's going to be affordable for 60 years. The average unit size is about 440 square foot. And this is, you know, a great site with access to public transportation, shopping. And this is, you know, a great site with access to public transportation, shopping, recreation and more. Um, this next slide shows our breakdown, a little more technical. So I'll start on the left side. I saw everyone lean forward there, so I'll go slowly on this. But this um, on the left half, we're here is our affordable rental breakdown. Um, we've got unit type and then we have the approved, which is approved in twenty seventeen project as well as this last slide on the right is our revised change. So originally, back in twenty seventeen, we had a total of seventy-eight affordable rental units that included a manager's unit. So it was seven studios, seventy-one bedroom and then that one two-bedroom manager's unit there. So we increased the affordable unit count to one hundred and ten and we got um, thirty-two additional units there. So there was one new studio that we got and then um, thirty-one additional one-bedroom affordable units there, so thirty-two. This right side is the overall unit count, um, a little bit more info here. But these middle rows is what was approved. And on the right side, the last two columns are what is the current one. So again, seventy-seven affordable residential and one manager's unit. And we boosted that up to a hundred nine affordable residential and one manager's unit there. The condo town resident and, excuse me, marquery residential units have stayed the same. So the only change in the design was on the um, our change in unit count was for the affordable buildings there too. And this is really in response with um, working with city council as well as feedback that we've heard from the community. There. So another thing on it, the next two slides, just kind of touch upon some of our design modifications. So um, as you guys know, we can't just, you know, make units appear out of nowhere. So we, one thing that we always have to work with on these designs is our floor area. So we have um, there's a cap on how much floor area um, we can use. And that's essentially space that can go to residential or commercial space um, there. So what we had to do is we had to reduce the size of our um, condo hotel unit by about fifteen thousand um, square feet there and move that to the residential um, or the affordable residential area there. So that was one thing. This next slide shows some of our modified, modified, excuse me, floor plan. So one thing we needed to do um, was, what we did was elongate the building. So this top um, portion on the left is just a quick clip of what the affordable floor plate look like. And this bottom half is what it currently is. So if you guys can see, we kind of lengthened the building towards the top of the screen, which is um, the Maka side. So what we didn't wanna do, we didn't wanna make the units smaller and then squeeze more units there, you know? So we wanted to get a longer building to um, get similar footprints to what we had on our old, on our previous one bedrooms. Um, but be able to add more units there. So we're able to maintain that unit type um, and size as well. And the last thing we did, um, which I don't have shown on any of the images, is we converted one level of our proposed parking to affordable housing there as well. And lastly, just wanted to provide a quick status update on where we are. So um, in the last six months to a year, we're working on extending our building permit deadline. So originally, we were required to get a building permit by the end, about the end of last year. And we worked closely with um, city council. And we recently, and recently, resolution twenty-four dash eighty C D one was adopted by council. And what that did was, is essentially two things. The first thing was it amended the plan to include thirty-two additional affordable rental units there. And secondly, it extended our deadline to obtain a building permit to um, for three extra years to April twenty twenty-seven there. And our next steps for us is to um, work on getting our project financing, work on our project design and construction drawings, getting those wrapped up as well as work with D P P to get the project, um, the project's foundation and building permits to get construction going there. But that's it for me. I mean, I really wanted to thank the neighborhood board for allowing me to, you know, present updates over the years. And also wanted to thank the council members and specifically council member Se. He's always been a strong advocate for affordable housing and always um, helps remind me to come to the neighborhood board to speak to you guys. So thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Isaiah Sato. Real quick, if you're able to disclose, what is eighty percent AMI currently?
Yes, I can. I don't think I have it. Let me see if I have a slide real quick. I do. So this is the um, current, the twenty twenty-three and it's current um, right now, they updated it in the summer time. So should be good for a few more months, right? So eighty percent rent for one bedroom is nineteen sixty-five. We're actually targeting, and which is why I circled it in red, our projects targeting sixty percent AMI um, for the studios, but most of our units are one bedrooms, a hundred and one units are one bedroom. So that would be fourteen seventy-three um, a month. And that includes utilities, so would have to include any kind of maintenance fee, water, sewer, electricity. Has to be all-inclusive.
Thank you. For members, questions? Um, Secretary Rice and then Frasier Umodo.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your presentation. Um, I was here for the last one in October. I don't remember there being a hotel component. Is this something new?
Not the hotel component was always there. You might have been mixing it up with one of my other projects that I presented, but this hotel was there since the twenty seventeen.
Why do we need a hotel on Kapilani Boulevard? What studies have you done that warrants a hotel in a residential area? We've got one now with the re- with the Renaissance. We've got Almoana Hotel. Do we really need another hotel?
Actually, one more is the sky. Sky, sky.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the Renaissance, that's the sky. Yeah. What, what kind of studies have you done that tells the community we need a hotel there? We need more housing for people. We don't need hotels.
Thank you, member. Um, that's a great question. So this project um, was originally approved in twenty seventeen. And at that time, let me, let me back up a bit. So this project is a T O D project and it's part of the Alamoana um, neighborhood T O D area. And at that time in twenty seventeen, the city was working with a draft T O D plan. And in the draft T O D plan, it um, it recommended mixed use in this area. And hotel is one of those mixed use to not only have residential to help activate it by having, you know, commercial hotel and other kinds of use um, in the area so that people don't all live here and have to drive downtown or need to drive somewhere um, out of the area, so they'd be able to work and live in the same area. So that was the intent, or one of the intents in the original T O D plan. Since then, um, the final T O D plan was adopted. And um, I think you guys might have heard, but the area of hotels were limited to the Atkinson area or near um, the convention center closer to Waikiki um, is what the latest T O D, T O D plan, excuse me, approved. There as well. And I'm familiar with the resolution that the neighborhood board um, passed last year as well. But our client um, feels strongly that a condo hotel um, is good for this area and um, will fit, you know, the spirit of T O D being mixed use.
Um, great. However, things have dramatically changed in Hawaii since two thousand and seventeen. People are living on the streets. People can't afford to pay rent. I have one, I have three sons. One son had to leave Hawaii because he couldn't afford to live here with two little girls and a wife. Waikiki has plenty of hotel rooms. The hotels in Waikiki cannot find employees to work there. The hotels in Koalina can't find employees to work there. How are you gonna find, or your developer gonna find, or whoever the brand of the franchise of the hotels gonna be? Find employees. I know that the Renaissance is having a heck of a time finding employees. I just really believe in my heart, keep the hotels in the hotel districts, Waikiki or downtown. They don't need to be in central Almoana area. You're gonna have a real hard time. I'm dead set against a hotel. I don't know what my colleagues feel, but I am voicing my opinion. It's just downright wrong. And the city council made a huge mistake doing this. And if there was a public hearing, which I'm sure there was, I wasn't aware of it. Otherwise, me and my big mouth would have been there, along with a whole lot of other people who feel the very same way in this district and in this community. So thank you for letting me have my say, but I think your, the decision is extremely wrong. Thank you.
Secretary Rice, thank you. Uh, Frasier Umodo and then Member Mariano and then Member Fanger.
Yes, uh, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to echo what um, member Rice expressed. And actually, I think your last presentation about this condo hotel um, actually inspired us. Uh, was part of the inspiration for us to pass a resolution, um, basically, you know, um, institutionalizing our shared um, disappointment with the kind of investment in tourism happening in this area uh, instead of housing for, for more local families. Um, that said, um, your affordable units for seniors, um, most other buildings for seniors, they all have a public gathering space because there's a lot of isolation that seniors face. Does your tower with all the senior units, is there any kind of public meeting space available built in for them to gather?
Yeah, thank you, Member Umodo, for that question. So we do have some community areas. I don't have a plan uh, available to show you guys um, just yet. But we do have like a community room and some other community space areas built into the um, the tower itself.
Okay, and so again, ba- back to this idea of a hotel, basically, it's individual people purchase a condo and then you guys manage them individually, or how does that work? Because it's a condo hotel. Is that like individual owners and then you manage or the company manages, who gets to rent? So it's like having a whole bunch of Airbnbs in our district.
Yeah, that's a great question. So um, so condo hotel, the condo portion of that um, name is essentially the type of ownership. So like you mentioned, it, it would be individually purchased like a condominium, right? Where they, the individual users. For the Airbnb question, um, no, that's not correct. We, we would operate under one provider. Um, and the condo owners wouldn't, if they choose, or they would need to go through that provider. So it'd be similar to the Renaissance at Sky Alamoana, where a portion is a condo hotel individually owned, but it all needs to go through um, the, you know, the Renaissance or that brand. And it can't be like Airbnb. It's not gonna be a mishmash like Alamoana Hotel, I guess. It's all gonna be one, you know, one front desk.
And can you tell us about, you know, the fact that we don't have it? The, the whole reason why you got, you were allowed to build this condo hotel in this, right in that particular space was because we're supposed to have uh, rail go there. Um, right now, we don't have money for rail to go there. So what's, how do we justify that happening? I mean, what happens if rail never goes there and we're stuck with all these hotels that were, you know? And the idea of the hotel, I think the rail, I, I don't actually understand how that happened because I thought the rail was about bringing local families more into town. And so why would these local families use um, these hotel, a hotel there? But anyway, if you wanna answer, how is it that you got approved once again in April of this year? When um, when uh, you guys are, are you scheduled, is the meeting scheduled to happen? On April twenty-seventh or didn't already happen?
Yeah, let me um, couple of questions there. Let me go back to that rail question. So T O D transit oriented development um, is not just about rail. It's about transit oriented development in general, so pedestrian, bike lanes. So as you can see, you know, the city and the state has been um, working on a lot more of the multimodal transportation uses. We have a lot of bike lanes and I know you guys have been talking about it earlier in the meeting today. But it's not just about rail. I think um, a lot of times for us and even for me, we, we focus in on, on rail. But um, as a state, we're very, you know, vehicle centric, so we're hoping to move away from that. And that's what's included in this T O D um, plan there. So um, that's one part. For the other part is we, so since um, so we, since I, since I last presented, I think it was Aug, it's either August or October last year. So we, we had um, a few pushes at city council, a few times around the city council. So in last December, we were at city council. And one thing that the council members really um, pushed as well as the community was the need for more affordable housing. So what happened in December at that meeting is we got a extension to April, um, which is, you know, this month, right? And um, what we did is we went back to the drawing board. We worked with our architects, um, our engineers. And then we came up with a plan to provide thirty-two additional affordable housing units. And we took that back to the department, D P P for review, and then it went to council again. So we um, were on the zoning committee earlier this month. And then we, I think it was last week, we were at full council, um, where it was adopted, the extension of time for the building permit. So the project was approved originally in twenty seventeen and this um, latest extension um, was this month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frasier Umodo and Mr. Sato, uh, Member Mariano and then Member Fanger.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you for the presentation. I have uh, with my colleague, Board Member Rice and Eva Moyo. I just wanted to add a couple of other things. So what I heard you say is that there's gonna be uh, three types of owners. Condo owner, rental and tourist. And so if that is the case, my question for this, because I have a follow-up question as well, is amenities. Because I've seen some condos where, you know, the amenities that's brought there, it's not equally shared between owners and renters. Now, would that be the same with this new portion with the tourists that's coming in, you know, who has priorities? Can you answer that? And I got a follow-up on that.
Okay, so um, for the first part of your question, um, it's not gonna be, you know, three owners. The rental, affordable rentals will all be um, owned and managed by one sole company. So one company will have all hundred um, nine units in the manager's unit there and they'll rent it um, out that way. So, so that's one group. And within that um, affordable rental tower, they will have their own um, amenities. Um, I believe it's a community room. I need to look through some of my notes to see what other amenities they have there. The condo hotel, um, that's the portion that's gonna be individually owned. Um, it's essentially, you essentially gotta think about as a hotel. But instead of having one hotel, one big hotel owner, it's individually owned by um, people. So it's just a way of how it was sold essentially there. But the um, for shared amenities, to answer that, they will be, the projects will be um, have separate amenities.
For the men there. So you have separate amenities for renters, separate amenities for tourists?
Yes.
Okay, so the, on the thirty-one uh, additional uh, units that you brought in for rental, um, you know, and again, I know what, what you're trying to say as far as the um, T M I, uh, the T M I. Um, how, AMI, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, the number of section eight have you set aside to go into this development?
That's a great question. My understanding is we, at least now, we haven't separated any specifically for section eight. Um, I'd have to check with the, a developer to see um, if they plan on doing it that way.
Okay, and then just two more and then I'll be, I'll be done.
Okay, thanks for asking one at a time. Helps me.
Yes, they, lately, all condos in the area uh, have Yes, they, lately, all condos in the area have a big increase with insurance costs. Some condos has gone from 40% increase to one that went to 100% increase because of lack of coverage. Because this is a mixed use type of project, that, that might be slightly different how that's going to be covered. And my concern is, maybe you can't answer it now, is that a lot of that cost is going to be done to the, that one development that handles all of the renters. And then the other one is the condo owners. And then the tourists may escape from that because, you know, they have no amenities except the organization that's running it. So that, that's a concern that I have. And then the other part is, since it's mixed use, will that tourist portion be exempt from the tourist tax? That's given to all the hotels in Waikiki?
Those are great questions. So for the first one, insurance, yeah, that's a statewide issue and a challenge. One of the great things about our affordable rentals is the, the rental rate is capped. So if you think about it another way, if insurance prices go up and if electricity, water prices go up, the owner cannot increase the rent beyond the same rent. So it's actually the owner would take a loss, I guess, on that side. So the rental rates are set there. For the other part of the question with the tax, they will be paying, I mean, excuse me, paying significant amount of taxes. I mean, they will be paying the tourist tax. I think for the project, we anticipate about $38 million in annual tax revenues for the state property tax, as well as, I mean, the state, the city property tax and the state TAT and other taxes there. And that's annually.
Yeah, because the concern, the concern is making its feet down the road. You know, we have guarantee of warranties up to 10 years lifecycle for certain types of mechanical things that's in the unit. But then when that lifecycle goes away, oftentimes owners and condominiums are assessed with a special assessment to cover, you know, some of those things. And insurance cost is one that they're going to pick up. And so if you're saying that the rent is going to be capped, I would say if not, maybe the board, we could consider this for this for affordability, that they do a minimum of 10 to 15 years so that those families that's in those affordable units renting, you know, have a chance, you know, to stay in the unit and not have to worry about this increase of making its feet, increase of insurance costs and everything that's going to be borne by the renter in which we're trying to help get off the streets, or even students that graduated from high school, you know, to kind of live on their own. So if you can address that real quick, please?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Member Mariano. Yeah, again, the, the rental rates are capped by the, by the feds and the state. And the maintenance fees are included in that, which includes insurance. And that's going to be capped for 60 years.
60 years?
Yeah, 60 years. So we're staying affordable for 60 years.
Okay, so you're saying that a one bedroom unit, if you showed up for 1,400, will be fixed at 1,400 for 60 years?
Okay, let me, let me rephrase that. It's going to be capped at the AMI percentage for 60 years. That number is assessed by the HUD, the federal, the feds, and, and it's reassessed every year at what they consider affordable. And that said.
Yes, again, not related to this, but it does have some impact. Because just recently, I went to restaurants like you all have. I just went to help, I went to dry cleaners, and I went to another establishment. In addition to paying the regular fee and the tax, the GE tax, now I'm being assessed a 3% surcharge for using a credit card. And, and then I'm going to be assessed for something else. So my concern for housing would be something like that. And if we can be rest assured, our neighborhood board will watch it and will ask the state and the city council to also watch these type of projects as well. Because as we try to cram upward, we have to be really diligent because the increase of the infrastructure that's failing, and you can see that we've had water breakage throughout, power failures, that cost is going to be picked up by the rest of us that live here, or we may have to leave. So please put that into consideration when you talk to the developer again, and we'll watch it here.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Member Ferengi?
Hi, thank you. I'll be quick. I appreciate you for being here, Izan, and taking all of our questions, really, and all your patience. But all of the points that have been noted, I, I agree with, with these, these members. These are things that have been brought up by our constituents, our, our neighborhood members. And so that's why we're bringing them up to you. And I would just like to add to what Member Uomo said regarding the TOD plan and that this, a lot of projects were approved when we were all anticipating the rail to becoming to Alamoana. And it is not coming to Alamoana anymore. And we are really faced with very, very severe traffic here. Traffic that is not safe. It's not really tourist friendly. It's, it's not even resident friendly anymore. And we are all concerned about that, and that's why we're bringing this up. Along with a lot of other things besides the fact that there, you know, aren't enough employees for, for the hotels that are already in existence and all of the other things that you've already heard. But really, please keep in mind that traffic is, is, is a real issue here. And I just want to end with, you know, again, thank you for hearing us and, and sharing our concerns.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ida Sato for being here, answering our questions, and board members for your very diligent questions. For, absolutely.
After the 60 years of, for your units that are affordable, do the, our company or the developer, whoever, do they plan on reviewing that 60 years to keep those units affordable? Or what happened to those affordable units after 60 years?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. It, it's really up to the developer or the owner and property manager at that time. To, if they, a lot of times if they want to keep it affordable, then they might need to work with the city or state on some subsidies there to keep it affordable. But it's up to the owner.
Yeah, just to be, just for clarity, Matt?
Yes.
Once the developer finished the project and it turns it over and it's occupied, then it's no longer, then there's bylaws and stuff that's established. And then it's self governed. There's a board that's governed for that condo project. So the board members of that association of owners would make that determination. So after 60 years, that it would have to be brought up by the
That's, that's for the owned ones, not for the rental ones. The rentals are affordable.
This is mixed use, so I'm sure the board's going to have to have some type of discussion. Like Palamona Hotel has, they have a board for owners and then they have a board for short term rentals.
Is the development seeking li-tech funding for the senior rentals?
What's that?
Is the li-tech funding to the senior rental project of this?
That's a question for Izan.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a good question. So the developer is planning on partnering with EH. The developer is not a, they don't have a strong background in affordable housing development. So they really wanted to partner with a local affordable housing developer. So they're, they're partnering with EH to develop the senior rental site there. And my understanding is they're looking at li-tech and, and other potential subsidies there.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for that spirited discussion. We are moving on to, it is now 7:45. We are moving on to item 4.4, Affordable Rental Project on City Point in Baritania. And we have Mr. Chris Fong from Trade One Capital.
The mic is right there. Yeah, a little awkward, but have fun with it.
Okay. Um, oh, perfect. Good evening, everyone. It is kind of awkward. My name is Chris Fong. I'm excited to present on the new affordable rental project. Actually, it's not technically in your district. It's actually in the Makiki district. So we presented last week at the Makiki, Makiki Neighborhood Board, but here to present to you as well, because you'll see it is very close to your boundary. Next slide. We'll start with introductions on myself and the team. So again, my name is Chris Fong. I'm with Trade One Capital. So Trade One Capital is a local based investment firm that invests in real estate and local businesses. We invest in all types of real estate, but one of our more notable projects on the housing side was the development of 801 South Street Towers with Marshall Hung back in 2012 through 2016. 801 South, for people who don't recognize it, at the corner of South Street and Cappellani Boulevard, you know, the old star advertiser building, workforce condos. And for this project, we're partnering with Stanford Car Development. And actually, I should introduce my team members too. So here I also have Penn Walker with me is on the Trade One Capital team, and Stanford Car himself, and Flo Robinson, two other members of Stanford Cars team. But Stanford Car, you know, no one needs no introduction. Wow, award winning development firm, local firm, real pioneers in the affordable housing space. You know, have developed over 5,500 apartment rentals in the state. Here are two other projects that you probably recognize in your, or closer area of. The first one's in your area, Holly Koala, you know, on Peabody Street, across from Alamoana Shopping Center, Affordable Rentals, and then Holly Koila Place, Affordable Rentals in Kakako. Next slide. So I'll go over the, the project site and the thesis for affordable housing. So this is the project site. So it's at the intersection of Peabody and Young Street. I think my, my label on the agenda said Peabody, Baritania, but it's actually Peabody, Young, on the Diamond Head side. And it comprises of two parcels. So a parcel on the left, the 20,000 square foot box. I'll call that the Peabody parcel. That used to house the former Plumeria Hostel. It's actually a vacant site now. That hostel actually got a notice that it couldn't operate anymore because it was an illegal use with, with current zoning. And on the right side, that 12,000 square foot parcel, I'll call that the Young Street parcel. You know, currently houses kind of your classic, you know, two story walk up apartments, a building. Full zone BMX3, so business mixed use, so allowing for business and residential use. And the history of the site is our company, Trade One Capital, actually acquired both properties back in 2017. At the time, the Peabody parcel, so the one on the left, was actually encumbered by a ground lease that termed out in 2023. So the beginning of this year was really when, you know, we were in a position to kind of like reimagine that block. And the thesis for affordable housing would, you know, stood out to us right off the bat. I mean, in the immediate area, you have various grocers, food outlets, restaurants, Safeway's Times right on the Malka side, open late at night, Zippy's on the Makai side, also open late at night, Walgreens, Pecco, Daiso, you know, Metropop facility, Strab, Kaiser, you know, two schools, Pinkahua Elementary and McKinley down the way too. So we, we really think a great location for affordable housing. Next slide. This is just a photo of those Peabody parcel improvements earlier this year. I just show this because, you know, when we got those improvements back, they, they quickly slid into disrepair. I mean, I mean, people got in, ripped out those doors, whipped out their windows, vandalism, squatters. And, you know, eventually we got a demo, you know, just out of safety, frankly. But I share this because, you know, in our eyes, it's, it's really just a perfect candidate for a site that's ripe for redevelopment. Next slide. And now I'll introduce the actual project. So here's the project and there's, there's a title at the top, but it's an affordable rental tower reserved for rental, renters earning 60% of the AMI and below. Comprises of 247 rental units, about 23 stories, I'm sorry, 23 stories, so about 200 feet in height. A mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. Includes 245 parking stalls, so about a one to one parking ratio to the unit, residential units, in a separate parking structure. And it's, it's exclusive to renters at 60% AMI, but we will have a, a portion of the units dedicated for renters at 30% AMI. And, you know, for this type of, you know, height and density, we are getting it entitled through the, the city's 201H entitlement program. And, you know, this was mentioned earlier from the last presentation, but just talking about, you know, what is 60% AMI rents and what's a 60% AMI rental? You know, looking at a one bedroom, 407, I'm sorry, $1,473 a month in max rents and gross rents, including utilities for residents earning $63,000. And for the 30% AMI rentals, it would just be half those numbers. Next slide. So I, I think one of the first things I'll point out is, you know, when we talk about the, the height and density for this project, you know, it is consistent with existing towers in the neighborhood. So we were kind of conscious of that in the early planning phases. You know, this is looking in the Makai direction, you know, two blocks across the street. That's Holly Kalele, that the blue and, you know, gray building that I'm sure we all recognized. 20 stories, so standing about 200 feet. Next slide. And this is looking in the Malka direction. You know, two blocks north, that, that blue and white building, which I'm sure you recognize too. That's, that's like 1212 Pinau, also 20, 20 stories. So, you know, again, 200 feet. So, you know, just driving home the point that our, our tower, you know, we really wanted to deliver the most affordable housing units, but, you know, cut it at consistency with the, the surrounding buildings. Next slide. So this is a snapshot of the ground floor of the building. And, you know, we tried to be thoughtful in how we designed the ground floor of the building just to be considerate of that Peabody intersection in the Peabody corridor. So a couple of things I'll point out. So ingress, ingress for, you know, for cars, we made sure that that was as far off of that Peabody intersection as possible. So it's, it's actually on the bottom right hand corner of the, the screen. That's the main, you know, car entrance and exit to ensure, you know, the traffic has minimal impact of the traffic flows on, on Peabody. Second thing is, you know, you can tell from the pictures, but the parking is in a separate parking structure from the residential tower. So, you know, driving up Peabody, which is a one way road, you know, the first thing you see is in a, a parking structure. It's, it's the residential building, right? So, and so kind of the sky's in that parking structure, so it's off to the side on Young Street. And the last thing I'll just mention, which I'm really excited about, is that big yard, open yard space along Peabody Street on the left hand side. So we've designed this building to live within a 22 foot setback off of Peabody. And a part of the reason for that setback is Peabody actually has a street widening, a setback in case the city and county ever wanted to expand the street in the future. And so, you know, we could have tried to design over it and ask for exemptions, but I think that was really important for us to kind of introduce that green space into the design. And what I mean by that is, next slide. This is just a, you know, rendering of what we're picturing, right? So just a nice streetscape for residents, pedestrians, and vehicular riders along Peabody. And so, you know, one, one of the few projects where we, we would actually be introducing a green space into an area that didn't have it before. Next slide. Just a quick close up of example floor plans. Studios and one bedrooms on the top, two bedrooms and three bedrooms on the bottom. You know, efficient with their design, but sufficient in, in serving their, their residents. Next slide. You know, Ashley Ted, can you go up back? I think I might have skipped a slide. Is there one with a floor plan? A typical floor plan in the building?
Yeah, I think you just passed it.
Oh, here we go. Thank you. Yeah. So this is a typical floor plan in the residential tower. It says floor eight through twenty-three because floors one through seven have the parking structure. But all I want to highlight here is if you look at the unit mix in the top right, again, it is studios, ones, twos and threes. You know, so one of the few affordable projects that'll have three-bedroom units. So really dedicated to families, over fifty percent of this unit mix will be for the two or three-bedroom unit mix. And and this is actually modeled after Holly Koila. So Stanford Car and their teams, other project in Kakako. And those guys will tell you, you know, that building has had zero effective vacancy since that thing was built ten years ago. So, you know, just proof that there there is a strong demand for these larger family units. You go back to the timeline at the end. So last thing, just ending here, just a quick timeline on the project. So, you know, March, April, really dedicated to community outreach. We went on to a couple of key stakeholders, including the residents on the Young Street Apartments and neighboring businesses. You know, again, last week we presented to Makiki Neighborhood Board. This week we're at the All-In-One Neighborhood Board. In May, we intend to submit our application for our two oh one age entitlements through DPP, process through DPP and the city council. You know, at city council, there is, you know, at a minimum two public hearings, one at the zoning committee and one at the full council. You know, hopefully submit for building permits at the end of the year, apply for funds, Lytec funds, bonds, some other, you know, state assistance with HHFDC in February of twenty twenty-five, winning an award in the summer of twenty twenty-five, breaking ground in twenty twenty-six with project completion in the summer of twenty twenty-eight. So that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. That's the first one for that wonderful presentation. Board members. Questions?
Yeah, quick question. You said this project is in the Makiki area?
So this one coming in Florida, it's above Baritania.
No, it's not above.
It's above South.
This is this is below Baritania. But this is Young Street, right close to seven eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And a whole whole two restaurant is what I thought.
Yeah, right. Correct. Yeah.
Okay, so I thought that was still our.
No, our border.
It's right there, though. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other?
So looking at the bedroom, right, living space, you said nine hundred and forty-seven square feet for three bedroom? What what would that run approximately?
For rent?
Yeah.
Ted, when you went flipping back to the the rent slide, I think it's on further up. Yeah, right over here. It's a three-bedroom rent for about two thousand, so qualifying for a family at about eighty thousand in annually income.
And then the last other part, I like your thought process of opening the garage entrance on Young Street. But Young Street, again, is narrow during peak periods, you know, unless there's signs that's put up by the city, you know, like we have on certain streets that during peak periods, you can park. And right there, it was a temporary closure of the entrance to the freeway of a P E going was temporary. Now it's kind of permanent. And then for the afternoons. And in the afternoons, I could tell you that I live here. And it takes me sometimes fifteen to twenty minutes just to go four blocks. So I can see if I, you know, with the increase in population that's going to be in that area. Like that interest there, but something made to look to, need to look at, sorry, need to look at is on Young Street. Because the residents and the businesses that's along Young Street may be impacted.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no good point. Come on, I'll just mention a couple of things. You know, luckily in front of our portion of the block on Young Street, there's there's no street parking. So, you know, one good thing is it's not like we're taking away street parking, nor are we. Are there cars to block or ingress and e- ingress and ingress when you turn right? But the other thing I'll mention is, and I didn't really realize this until we got deep into this process, but, you know, there's a there's a bus stop right on P E Boy across from our building, but there's also, it's either twelve or fourteen bus stops within a quarter-mile radius of our site, not to mention two B K stations, one on the Malka side by Safeway and one on the Makai side by seven-elevens or uh, to be. So, you know, we're we're excited for the, I guess, you call it like multimodal options for residents on site.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Chang.
I think it's a great idea. That place is a pits. It is absolutely disgusting over there. I I have to walk right there sometimes. It's awful. So thank you for getting Stanford Car involved. Jesus, if it's anything like the Holly Koila project. Good job.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Community members?
I'm actually hard to take with face. Stay calm.
Absolutely.
So you're going to Mario, just to address your concern about traffic. That's the thing we hear consistently. That's the most consistent feedback we get. And one thing to note is the parking garage is designed so that the queuing is actually internal. So as you imagine, people going to work or going to school, they queue within the garage, not on Young Street. So that's intentionally designed that way to decrease the traffic on the street. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay.
The height is two, two hundred?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Mister Stanford Car for being here as well. And Ted, thank you so much. Okay. I know four point five. We have a homeless houseless discussion with Mr. Anton Krucki, who's the director of the city and county of Honolulu Department of Community Services. Thank you for being here today.
Hey, Anton, which one am I looking at?
Thank you.
Which presentation is the Alwana? Is that somewhere?
Yep. Thank you. It's okay.
First, thank you to Mr. Ben Sullivan as well for for doing.
Are you still surfing young man?
Oh, yeah.
I knew you wouldn't do diapers. Good job.
Thank you for having me here at the Neighborhood Board. Jared Lee, I I appreciate being here. Ben invited him to come. He said he gave him some feedback and he asked for me to come. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Spencer's not here, but Dylan fills in nicely. So anyway, my job is I'm the director of the Department of Community Services for the city and county of Honolulu, and that's all human services of the activity that we do. So within my department, we have five divisions. And the five divisions are first, the Albany Affairs Division. So we have the all the stuff with the tuna that we do and how you can age racially displaced, sheltering, feeding, those kind of activities. We also have Work Hawaii, which does the rent-to-work program, job training, we have outreach for Work Hawaii. They're the American Job Board Centers. We also have the grants and aid, all grants and aid for the city. So those those go out and where that process now of awarding goes. We also do the Community Assistance Division, and that's all the vouchers. So that's a section eight voucher, you have the public housing authority. Section eight vouchers, emergency housing vouchers, also the rehab loans, home loans, all of those activities. I also have the Community-Based Development Division, which is all the HUD money that comes in. And that's been a tremendous amount of of money coming into the city during the pandemic. Really difficult to get that much money out. I could talk about some of those things we did. And then also in addition to those five divisions, the Childcare Coordinator Resources is in our department and also the Homeless Coordinator, which is really the topic that you've you've asked me to come and talk about tonight. So on this chart, there's a couple of points I want to make. As complex, as complex as homeless and houseless is good, it the strategy for the city and county of Honolulu really comes down to two things, right? It's about doing as many creative things as we can possibly do to get somebody to be willing to engage the system. And then the second part is constantly analyzing the system to see what resources we can come up with to service those decisions. And so, you know, and and so the strategy can remain the same and the situation can differ. An example might be that in two years ago, year and a half ago, we decided that when they were giving out all of the CARES Act money, that we would take ten million of that CARES Act money into our department and we give it out as a while housing vouchers. And the importance of this was the traditional method for giving vouchers is on a scale rating. It's the most chronic homeless. Those are difficult people to come up with the right ways to get them to engage the system. So we 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 didn't have those rules with this money. So we went with people that wanted to be housed. They 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 rated different on the scale. And just with that one program over the year, they housed over three hundred families and eight hundred and fifty people. And then we then with those were temporary vouchers and we followed them up with emergency housing vouchers. And over ninety percent of those people are still housed today. So, you know, it's it's a way of of doing that. What happens with the strategy then is now you've taken a lot of families and children off the street. You're left with a different population. So then you have to continually go back and say, what can I do with this different population to get them to silently engage the system? And then is my system what I need to service those decisions? And in the end, we need beds of many flavors. We need all kinds of beds, right? Because what happens is is you is you could, if you're houseless and homeless, if we don't go to a bed of some kind, you're still houseless homeless somewhere, right? Whether you've moved or whatever, you still are. So that's so that's what we try to do. So I'll come back to this chart to finish up and also take questions. But I also wanted to point out that coordination and partnership with the state, mayor and the governor have really come together and working together on the homeless crisis. The the funds that are that were cross-doing, and I'm talking about some of these projects as as I answer questions, really significant from where it was before. When I first took this position, they asked me to work with the state. And so we started doing some things with the state. And then we went from there to doing some collaboration with the state. And now we're actually doing contract partnerships with the state. We weren't doing those before. So I I mean, it's going to take all of us to do this. And I think the fact that the mayor and the governor, you know, have this relationship and this dedication is really good for the city and county of Honolulu. Okay, next slide. So I just wanted to point out that I wanted to give you some context in terms of the numbers and what we're dealing with. So there's a thing called a point and time count, and these numbers are from last year. The point and time count numbers will be coming out shortly sometime in May, and we'll know what's going on. The thing about the point and time count to remember is a lot of people can criticize how accurate it is. But in statistics, you don't necessarily have to be accurate, because if you do something the same way, it's comparative, right? But what's going to happen now in two thousand twenty-four is we have put so much money into service providers because of COVID. As an example, my my emergency solution grants that we normally give, we get funded two million dollars a year to give out. When COVID came out three years ago, I was given twenty-four million dollars to give out. You have to push a lot of money out to the community to do that. It swells up your service providers. It gives us a lot of programs. It's really good. But what we have is in the twenty twenty-four count, we had a hundred more counters than we had in the twenty-three count. So your numbers are going to go up. Okay, but let me talk about what what kind of trends we did in. So next slide. So the overall homeless that that we have on this island are about four thousand, a little over half are sheltered and and then the others are unsheltered. But the thing is, is with the with the kind of programs that I talked about, would be house three hundred families and all the other housing that we're doing, whether it be in shelters, transitional housing, permanent housing, right? Our numbers have actually stayed flat and come down. We were down eighteen percent and then we came up three percent. And that's with the system that's taking people in. We have people that come from mainland, they come here and are homeless, right? We have other people that have lost their houses. They become homeless. So if you're down like we were down eighteen percent because of that activity I said, we were probably down twenty-five to thirty percent because you have people coming into the system. Go up three percent. The real reason for that was we lost three shelters. We we lost one in Wainai. We lost Next Steps, which is here in town. And we also lost Family Assessment Center in Kakako. And I'll talk about what we're doing to try to cover. Next slide. So I was asked that that Kim, you know, love to ask this question. So since it was, I thought I'd look it up. I don't know if it can miss, but yeah, these are the numbers of of you wanted to know emergency shelter number beds, transitional housing beds over each year. And then those, the last set are really vets. That's a vet property state data. I happen to believe in transitional housing as a as a very good solution. Why I say that is that shelters are good for immediate got to get off the street. You're here. Let's figure out what you got, what you don't have. Maybe we can work with you. There was a twelve years ago, everybody said that if you did housing now, which meant you take somebody from a permanent housing, surround them with services, you can solve homelessness. Mayors wrote papers ten years ago saying in ten years homelessness will be gone. How are we doing? So it can work at times, but it doesn't work all the time because there's a journey that some people go through. And transitional housing, you can bring people together. Be there. They can work together. They can come up with their own solutions. You can do job training so that by the time they're coming out, and I'm saying coming out two, three years, then they're ready for housing, right? And then they can succeed in housing. Some people can succeed right away, but some people really cannot. When we put somebody in permanent housing and they don't succeed, they come out and be homeless again, and they're at the bottom of the list. And it's very difficult to house them yet. So if I house them, I really want it to be successful. Next. So if you go into the Partners in Care website, you'll have the different regions. And this region and in the other region of Waikiki and Wainai represent the largest parts of of the homeless population. That's almost fourteen hundred of the unsheltered population from the two thousand that are that are unsheltered. So we need to do a lot of work in these areas. Okay, next chart. And so again, another area and its charts. I didn't put Wainai in there. I tried to put the two closest ones to this note, but to give you the data. And next chart. Same thing with the with the regional data. Okay, we can go to the next chart. And and so what what I really want to talk about with this chart are the kind of things that we're trying to do. And then I'll take questions and answers that you want. But right now, you you probably see in the paper, this government is really active these cow hollies. And that that encompasses a lot of what I'm talking about, coming together as a community, right? We've opened up three or four with the state. The cow hollies also, they're generally single males, right? Because they have a congregate bathrooms and you can't be single when it's congregate bathroom, right? You can be some mix, but you can't have kids coming out at night walking down the bathroom. So with that in mind, we're we're opening up three family shelters at the same time. I have one here at Waikiki Vista. And that one will be the reincarnation of the Family Assessment Center that we lost in Kakako. So Catholic charities will run that. What makes that program really unique is is we gave them the ability to house families off the street. We gave them twelve units, so that's twelve families. But we also gave them the three floors above it, so those families can graduate into supportive housing overseen by Catholic charities, making room for more people to come in to stabilize. So really, we're doing forty-eight families in that family shelter. We bought a building in Wahihua. It's going to be run by Family Promise. As soon as I can put a lift in there to qualify for ADA, we'll have another twenty-seven families up in Wahihua, where we just got approved, Council of Thank You approved the Haula property that will be family sheltered down on that shore, which is badly needed. So at the same time, while I while I look at the situation with a lot of singles that we're addressing, you know, like I said, you need beds of many flavors, right? And so the family shelter. But at the same time, we're really gearing up on what we call hospice. And what we do there is we can take people that are are in in trauma and they maybe have to go to the emergency room. When they come out of the emergency room, a lot of times they go right back to the street. And we could help them then. We could take them to a hospice. So we have, we have one hospice that's that's in Ivalay, run by Kali Plama Health. We have another hospice that we just opened up in Laaki Hospital, and that one, the the core team transports people there and North Shore Mental Health runs that. And then we bought it. We bought a building and we're temporarily for for the Grail is coming through, but it's the first line, the old first line bank building on Billingham, and we're going to turn that into a hospice. So again, beds of many flavors. You know, last one I'll talk about that we're doing is is we have in addition to cow holly being built up. There's a big warehouse there. What's it? Hospice? Hospice, like a medical, I that's a wrong word. Thank you. Because, you know. No, it's not hospice. I got you. I got you. It's it's for medical recovery. Okay. Thank you very much. I I receive hospices. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you. The medical recovery. So you go in, you're there, there are like forty beds in each one, and people can be there for like two months, you know, getting healed and everything else, getting ready for the next step. And people can be there for like two months, you know, getting healed and everything else, getting ready for the next step. Thank you. And so the last one I want to talk about real briefly is there's a big warehouse that's in Iwale that eventually will be torn down as part of a transit order into end of development when the, when the rail comes through. So we're going to go, come in there. We're going to build four shelters, four different shelters. The first one, we're trying to get up right away. And we're trying to use a method in the first one where we're building these units inside the rooms. We don't have to make it weather sturdy because we're already in a room. And these are architects to heal. And a person goes through a 12 week program. Each week they focus on one part of the trauma that they're trying to heal. And as they go through this program, science says that they'll start to release the issues that they've gone through so that you can deal with them. So when they leave in 12 weeks, their chances of housing successfully is much better. So look for that one. You'll see some press releases on it. Call my office. I'll give you a tour, you know, and look at this one. This one's going to be, it's really new. It's going to be world class to the point that we're documenting everything we're doing now. So that as we do it, we can, we can see how it works. And if it works this way, it's going to be something that Hawaii will be doing. So with that, I'll open up. Any questions and everything else that?
Mr. Anton Krucki, thank you for being here and for this wonderful presentation. Lamorayano.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Medical respite was the word I was using. Medical respite.
Respite, yeah. That this kind of has been thinking about. And so one of the things, you know, you're following it, the transition shelter. And we discussed this, what we call like safe shelter, you know, for those that, you know, in transition, that needs some help, that they have a safe place to go. And get away from the drug addicts and the people that need some extra type of services. So families with children can go there to kind of be safe. And then the other aspect with this, we're kind of looking at part of that transition, you know? Take them from the streets, put them into a home, right? They may, once again, in a home, then sometimes they're forgotten. And so we still need to have the services for them to help with part of that transition, you know, to reassemble, refatriate back. So this transition shelter that you're talking about, I think is something that we probably want to look at. I think that's some of the things that we were kind of talking about here at the board because we, we feel that we don't want to just throw money at the problem. What we want to do is find a solution. You know, what's money is backing to try and provide that care and services that's needed for those that's in need, right? So as we work through our resolution to come up with what we want to present to the city council and go through the chain, can we come up and see you kind of talk about some of the things that we're considering? And if there's some funds that could be set aside to put towards this, you know, then are they able to, able to help transition some of the families that we're trying to help to regain back?
Driving, that's a great strategy because if you start with us, we can kind of frame it out. So then when it goes through the system, it's kind of been, the administration has done it. I just want to tell you one thing. We don't put people anywhere. I'm not in that, that business. So so we, we, we do everything we can to convince them to engage the system and then, you know, service those decisions that they made. That's an important point now because you know, the Supreme Court, that's being reviewed right now.
Correct.
That issue, Johnson versus Brands pass, but, but that's not part of what we do now. That's not the laws. But yes, please do, you can contact me. We can strategize. We can have meetings about it, you know, and my team.
Thank you. Treasury Umaro.
Oh, thank you, Director Krucki. I appreciate your very robust and thorough presentation. Thank you for returning. So you did cite that I, I did inquire about the, the ratio, but I didn't, I, the slide, maybe it's my screen. I wasn't able to see the exact ratio because you mentioned before where we were when you started was at 51 to 2 or 50%. You mentioned that we had approximately 4,000 unsheltered residents on Oahu. And I think you mentioned that we had around 2,500 beds. So you are narrowing, I guess, the ratio or you have made a lot of gains in terms of ensuring that we have more beds now. And it seems like unsheltered, in terms of unsheltered residents, the numbers are pretty consistent. But it sounds like even though you had three temporary shelters closed down last year, it sounds like all the kauhali and all the new things you're doing has made up for that decrease.
Yeah, it's, it's around a little over 4,000 total. That is about half and half, little 51, 49 on shelter versus unsheltered at any one time. So some are not transitional housing. Someone's in the shelter still considered homeless or housed.
Got it.
Even though they're in.
Yeah, then the shelter is temporary.
It's temporary, right? Transitional is, is programmatic, working with people, them working together.
Well, that becomes a problem because I think from what I understand, because I actually participate in the point in time count every year. And so my understanding is that if you're in a temporary shelter or transitional shelter, or even in a hospital or in prison or jail, you're actually considered sheltered. So they're not part of the 4,000 from my understanding.
Right. That's the 2,000 sheltered and the 2,000 unsheltered are all considered homeless houses. You're considered sheltered.
Oh, okay, okay. So, but you have, it sounds like you're saying you have, I guess, started providing more. So you're the more than, you were 50% and now you, you've made a lot of gains in the last two years since we saw you.
Yes, I, I, not only have we, but in the cities where you have a high cost of living, because I, I'll tell you that, you know, a lot of folks will tell you that you have drug issues, mental health issues and such, that's the, that's the underlying reason for homelessness. And it really isn't. It's an economic issue. And the, and the cities that have the highest cost of living, which we're partnered in, those cities have grown tremendously in the last five years in their homeless population, where ours as state flatness come down. So we have really worked hard together. And I think it's a lot of aloha spirit. R and I work together, we go on campus together, trying to understand the best we can. But as you need beds of many flavors to deal with drug issues, mental health issues. You notice the city gave the property to the state in Iwale for the, for the Mental Health Crisis Center, right? And so that, that would be a good one for people for mental health crisis. So that's why I talk about beds of many flavors because it can be, you know, stabilization, mental health. It can be transitional. It can be quick shelter. It can be permanent housing. But here in Hawaii, with the people working together and us doing some of the programs we've done, we've really held the line. And if we wouldn't have had people coming in from the mainland, it would have been much more down, considering how the other mainland cities go up. And a good point is, the point of that is cities that have instant, instant rise in, in cost of living, like a city like Bozeman, Montana, that didn't have that many homeless, they get instant rise in cost of living because everybody's attracted to Bozeman, y'all started everything. Now they have a large homeless population because the cost of living creates an economic.
Right. So Director Krucki, you, that's a really important point is the rising cost of living increases homelessness. One solution is to increase our funding for Section 8 housing vouchers. And when I say Section 8, I don't necessarily mean just federally funded housing vouchers, which I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, 100% of all house, Section 8 housing vouchers are funded federally. However, Hawaii used to fund Section 8 through state funds at one point, I think until 2001. And then we cut off that funding stream. And it just so happens that we actually started seeing an uprise in our homeless, our unsheltered population. Are, are there efforts to get more state or county funds to fund these housing vouchers to keep, to meet families where they are, to keep them housed as rents go up, but their paychecks do not go up. And, you know, because if we started taxing or empty homes at the county level or, you know, charging a surcharge on the state level, we could use that revenue to fund the more of these vouchers. Thoughts?
Yeah, I, Kim, you're really right. You know, the HUD is the one that sends us the Section 8 vouchers. And the mayor is going to Washington this week and he's making a, a presentation talking about giving us 20% more of the Section 8 vouchers. We also get, we got in front of the federal government for emergency housing vouchers that we've used. We use CARES Act money to, to do those vouchers I talked about. And we also get state money for other housing first vouchers. The housing first vouchers are very interesting because we can get out of the way on those. We can award those to a service provider like Catholic Charities. Then they get 20 vouchers and they place, right? And they can watch the folks and, and contact them. Vouchers are very helpful. They, 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 they replace having to build a new house, right? You put somebody in an existing house. And so they are helpful. 50% of the people that are awarded Section 8 vouchers stay in place. So it doesn't always solve homelessness, but it keeps somebody from becoming homeless, right? They're, they're using all their money. They're at their ends with it. They get Section 8 and now they have some disposable income.
Right. So I just want to share with you though, as a landlord who accepts Section 8, these temporary vouchers that the, the city is offering, the CARES Act, these, where you go in knowing that it's only going to last a year. I, you probably understand and realize that it doesn't make landlords as comfortable as if it were a longstanding, a guaranteed Section 8 voucher that stayed with the tenant as long as they're in need. Because obviously if tenants start making earn more, earning more income, their Section 8 portion becomes lesser until, as in the case of some of my tenants, they get to the point where they no longer are eligible for Section 8. And actually they're quite fine. You know, they're able to sustain themselves. But what's really important for, I think landlords is that the Section 8 funding source isn't going to only be a year. And then the landlord becomes in a situation where they're like, well, what do I do now? That their Section 8 voucher expired because it was, it was designed to be temporary.
Short-term vouchers. That's when we backed them with the emergency housing vouchers. So we have the one-year vouchers to get people to know them, get them in a house. And then we followed up with the nine-year voucher, right behind.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think, not trying to speak for member Umaro, but I follow what she's saying. And those are some of my concerns as well. Temporary funding for projects is good, but we also have to look at the long term. You know, you see all these affordable housings that we're putting up at all these different condos and they're making them at the AMI and all that. You know, at some point, you know, some of that will go away. And those that's on fixed income, those that, you know, they're really making it. You know, we need to have something so that we're not just looking at the study that's here, which is great. But we also have to look at those that's currently in housing, you know, to plan for that so that we can care for them. So they do not become at the new specifics.
Yeah, I think one of the things that really helped the numbers is another department on the south side of our department is Economic Relief. The Office of Economic Relief, their rent and, and utility relief they did. That program was really successful in keeping people housed. And that's really helped our efforts an awful lot. But you know, long term is a tough thing. Governments have really shifted during the pandemic. And have moved funds in ways they never moved them before. And, you know, I'm, I'm looking in some areas that the money starts to funnel. And I've got to get ahead of that. I can't react to it when it happens. I can get ahead of it. I, I, I get that. That's what we work on in strategy.
And finally, Director, how do we get a copy of your presentation? I didn't see it in our Google folder.
We'll put it in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
Um, is this the?
Down closer.
These are awesome people, by the way.
So curious question. I know these programs are actually really great.
Did you come to the mic?
Oh.
Where you speak up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, these programs are really great. There are a lot of what the community has in need of. Now, I could think our question here for our guests and myself or ourselves is for those who are still remaining on the streets who are not in families or who are not veterans or who are not severely mentally disabled or but then you have like single individuals or you have people who don't meet severe mental illness criteria to, to get those guys, there's a bit into that. And then like so with our guests here, we've been working with them, Hoi'akasi and Kaua'akua. And we've been working with a number of them in Kaua'akua, right? There's still no place for them to go. That means they're moving as of right now, right?
But we got Little Street on.
I know you did. And that was common. We were sharing with them too.
It's going to be over seven units like Little Street. No, it's a, it's a, it's like Little Street, doesn't it?
So before, though, I mean, has the county considered possible maybe having like baselons or like spaces where the people that we're working with are able to, to stay until those kind of places open up for them? That, that more suitable to their needs or, or anything along those lines or?
Yeah, I, I know you have a bit of that. I, I have to disagree. I don't think it's simply government's best interest and race safe zone. They become difficult to manage because they're, they're something we can't manage. And we've had everybody a lot of it. Well, I'm just saying, that's my opinion. I know you like it. But my opinion is, is, you know, you, it was very difficult. If you did Kaua'akua and Kaua'akua became a dangerous place. It was a dangerous place for citizens and everything else. There were weapons there, everything. So that station will be difficult, but we will work with people that want to work with us to do what we can do for them. We really will. We're going to bring up beds of many flavors to try and do that. We're going to do 75 homeless tiny homes in Kaua'akua in that, you know, in the brown area. We'll have, we've got 100 beds in nine months to make a change. So make us stay positive. If you want to, if you want to get housed, we'll, we'll house them. We will.
I did want a question we talked about. So Kaua'akua was a very good place. And we had 300 something plus people there. But at the end, I mean, when it came down to organizing a community and the community taking responsibility, we got down to 100 something individuals who were paying the bar or waiting to like, who are housed there?
Someone tried to build a community like that in Kaua'akua. There's 60 units in there and the whole place is going to be homeless. And where's that? You guys can manage yourselves and, and all of that. And we'll pull out service providers in there to be resource. But you're going to make the wall. You're going to be responsible. They have to be responsible. You're something from the top. What's that? Yeah, but it's, it's not, it's not the safe zone where, okay, here's the problem.
No, yeah, no. It wouldn't be like a, a park thing. I think that.
But they took us down and they took us to the wrong, wrong part of the ground. This is not a stop. We don't, well, we, we enforce it, but there's citizen reaction. And we do have to, we do have to. It's not a homeless program. It's not a homeless.
Yeah.
It was with the previous administration.
I was just wondering, I haven't been in homeless services for several years now, but how do you prioritize who gets into the tiny homes and the kauhali? I'm just wondering because, you know, I've always been a huge, a whole service service. I think they are using our tax dollars to just move people from one place to another, even right across the street. But I literally see people grab their tents on veritania from one side of the street to the other. So I'm just wondering, I know we folks are trying really hard to house folks and to provide shelter. And I'm just wondering how we prioritize.
Well, it depends on the source of money. The source of money we define by the priority. So it's not money. They have, they have a whole, kind of scale. They have, they have a whole, uh, scale and it's a part of the person answers questions. If I get money from another source, like the CARES Act money, I get a different pulse. So it's really the source of money that defines that. Um, you know, like I said, I don't believe enforcement can clean up our homeless program. You know, but if somebody doesn't go to bed, there's summer, right? There's still a, I, I understand that.
Yeah, I just feel.
It's a leftover from before, but leaving, you get as many sets as that to clean up, you know, a lot of trash and other stuff. It's unfortunate.
These folks are an example of people who take care of their, their, they take care of.
Yeah, and I, I believe the only solutions that will come out of it, you know, we should have been dedicated.
I did also just want to say that the programs that you guys have created since our.
Since we met.
Yes, they're, they're amazing. I'm actually glad for that.
Actually, I have a, what's kind of like the cost per uh unit necessary to Hakalei?
What's the cost?
What's the cost per unit, like base cost rating?
Thirty, thirty percent usually of what you got to like that.
No, but like it's.
What we charge for a minute?
No, to construct the physical unit.
That's about, um, the, the ones that, that they're making that were at the middle of three. I, I think those were about eighteen to twenty-one hundred dollars a piece. But that for the unit, you also have to have a, a shower, set of showers and a set of bathrooms and laundry stuff. So there's auxiliary costs, you know, and then fillings like that.
So still, why are we with this twenty-one hundred plus?
Yeah, so it's not bad, you know. But see, there's no sewer or anything. I have a whole infrastructure.
Right, right.
I have other facilities for work because now I have infrastructure, right? So then you can build bathrooms and rooms and that stuff, I think.
We just need to provide safe spaces for people to live while they're waiting to get in.
So I think the, to clarify, um, space fix is for people who are homeless, who are willing to contribute to be a part of community and work together to take care of, maintain, maintain their spaces or, I don't know, maybe potentially in the future, the city could come up with an employment program or, or something, you know, that incentivizes individuals to our houses to contribute to that, to the community more, um.
Try our, try our rent to work program. Work well. If you're willing, if you're willing to work, you pay your rent.
Oh, yeah.
So the rent to work is a good program. We just needed a person that liked it. He visited, so thank him. Very much like you, you know, I don't know if I do, but it's Al Philston and he was willing to work and rent to work. Now he's got a room to start where he wants to sell it. Beds of many flavors is what I think. That's, we need.
Oh, yeah. We have one, one more question.
What, what if? And you didn't do a second panel? What's that? What if you can compete to a second panel? We'll try to look at that. That's, that's much, and that's believable. Maybe that doesn't keep you out of it. That's why I got a little bit of that line in Hawaii.
Thank you everyone for that discussion.
Question, but like in terms of like just like trying to try and draft a history. It's like, when you're, I mean, I hate saying you have some disagreement with like all certain things you have as far as we should. You're also responsible for the state's traffic. I'm just curious. The answer is, potentially facilitating or creating a community case initiative to create safe spaces that those areas are needed to other opportunities of like Hakalei or the transitional housing.
I'm, I'm working on, I'm working on beds in a moment. So I, I, I really would like to get from that space for this.
So if, so if a space is, like, anyone?
I'm working on that.
We can, and then we can work.
Don't be real.
Yeah. I, we're hardworking.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for this discussion. For the difference. Okay, the time is now eight forty. We only have the room until nine P M. So we're going to go through this quickly. Um, any subdistrict reports?
Uh, I have one for mine.
Remember Chang?
They, they came to trim trees and they trimmed the dead trees again. No, they didn't remove it. They trimmed, they trimmed the dead tree. Well, actually they were branches. Now it's got twig, like the trunk and then there's like.
I keep trimming it.
They keep trimming a tree. Eventually the tree will be gone, but that might take ten years.
Thank you, Member Chang.
And then, and then they, they did the parking meters. So that's, that's great. So. Getting there.
Thank you. Any other subdistrict reports?
Yeah. I've reported before reference Pensacola. You know, when they, when they repay Pensacola, they put the strip things down and uh it's still jacked. I mean, if you go down, they fixed some of it. They put this, they hastily put in these speed bumps. You know, said really it's not really doing its job. And just before you get there, it's supposed to be spelled, um. And if you go on O'Leary, O'Leary Street, uh, corner of O'Leary and Pensacola, you go to Pensacola, all of that is just all torn up. And it's, it's pretty bad. So you go from O'Leary back up towards Matiki side, there's some of it that needs to be repaired. So quality control, I think when we start to put in these hastily basically things on the streets um for traffic calming, we need to make sure we have quality control. And then the other thing is, as I mentioned before, those bike, bikes, plastic things that, that's up there. There's a whole bunch that's down and broken. And if you go down, in fact, just yesterday, uh, Sunday, I went down on Ward, Upward, uh, side of Blaisdell. And all of those white pylon things for the bike lane is all down. And so see the trash cans, I mean, trust trucks that's going down, as I mentioned before, or trucks that's going in and they're going and using the bike lanes. Uh, and they're knocking those things down and it's costing uh the city money. And it's a high soul.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Any other subdistrict reports? Okay, residents, community concerns?
Uh, Lieutenant Segocia, are you still there?
Nope.
Okay.
Do you want to dispose a question for the record?
Uh, yeah, I do have a really quick question. Um, I don't know if this is something that the E C L can forward to H P D or um, uh, what else have I ever say? This is something you forward to H P D. Um, on Leona Streets, uh, there's no parking sign and there's a ton of cars parked over there. This is the Leona Street section that connects the Cedar Street. Uh, and it's basically made the streets impassable. So people who are trying to go home from there can't go home. And I received a couple of complaints from there. Um, and it is pretty dangerous. Uh, I know a couple of people have won a spot. It's an accident there because the street's all blocked off. So if H P D can just go there and enforce the no parking sign, that would be wonderful. Thank you, Tegdell. Thank you so much.
First, my search tree.
Uh, you're in community?
Community.
Community concerns?
Yeah.
I have one. Any concerns?
Okay.
And this is on the, uh, the no right turn on red. I've heard from numerous individuals, not just in my area here, but across, across the island. Uh, this no right turn doesn't make sense. And we should probably look at bringing it up to this city council or state, whoever is putting that uh, that rule because it makes sense that we're protecting pedestrians. But now we're creating another problem because people are waiting because they can't make that right turn. And when the traffic light changes really quick, then all the cars are backed up and now you have angry voters.
Okay. Thank you.
Section, um, Pensacola, Kapulani, um, going left and right, Pepe Coy. Kenny, I'm hoping you're going to get going.
Okay, thank you, Member Mariano. Uh, we're now moving on to elected official reports. And again, the time is now eight forty-four. Uh, Mr. Ben Sullivan.
Thank you all. What a long meeting. But uh, we're, you're from Director Kruckey.
Thank you for facilitating that, by the way.
Um, Ben Sullivan, Mayor's Rap, I, I brought a couple of flyers on three one one because I think there was questions about how the app works previously. So I wanted to share those for anyone who's interested. I also brought copies of the mayor's highlights for the month, so I don't have to read them off you. And I'm really just going to report on very quickly. Um, there was a number of items related to traffic that, that, uh, there was an ask for D T S to follow up on. One was, is the one member Marianna just mentioned, which was Pensacola and Kapulani. Unfortunately, with this one, um, because there's a change in traffic flow right now in Kapulani needing to be paving, I don't have to do that study, but, but, you know, there's going to be a reassessment after, after the paving is complete. There was a couple other asks for, for analysis on traffic. One was the right to turn near Whole Foods at Coma K A. And so D T S did respond and said they would analyze it and check the investigation or the accident reports and make a determination if there was, there was needed changes there. Um, they gave a similar response for parking stalls causing, causing traffic at Coma K A. And uh, shoot, a couple of different intersections here, Coma K A and Queen Street. Um, and so they're going to look into that one as well. I'm, I'm trying to be really brief. I apologize. I don't want to read the, uh, the entire details here because I know we're trying to get out of here. There's another one, Auto Perfection LLC. You guys remember this one? There's an auto dealer that was. Apparently parking, yeah. So, so two, two um departments responded on this one. So D T S committed performing investigation and doing, doing site inspections. And the H P D did in fact visit and spoke, I guess on H P D's visit, there was no one parking illegally, but they did speak to staff at the establishment and make sure they understood that that was not, not okay. And so they, they were given um notice on that. Let me see, what else do I have here? Paradise Petals. So there was another concern about a company called Paradise Petals dropping people off by uh Whole Foods. And I believe it was, you know, the, 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 the constant here was people were drinking and getting out and they were loud and, and difficult. Uh, so what I'm learning from H P D is that on March eighth, March eighth to April fourth, District One officers checked the area for Whole Foods. Um, during the checks, they did not observe multi-passenger bikes blocking the road there and there were no other violations. Uh, apparently D P P also did some investigation on this. And I'm looking, you know, I'm not seeing anything in terms of them actually witnessing any of this happening. See if there's any other notes on this. Okay, there was a discussion with the owner and they, um, the owner apologized and related that upon receiving complaint from residents about a month ago, Paradise Petals changed their route so they no longer stop in front of it. So hopefully that resolves the problem. Obviously it might just displace it, but we'll see. Um, the temporary shelter bed ratio I think was answered in the previous presentation. And I did just give you information on the three one one app. So I think that covers everything I have.
Awesome.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Sullivan. Councilmember Say, thank you for being here and presenting today.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed it this evening. And more importantly, let's acknowledge our city employees who represented the city very well. For the Department, Fire Department, the Director Anton Kruckey and also Ben. We are trying our very best to address all the issues and thank you very much, Bill, for your well done. And my report is in the chat.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Um, Councilmember Tyler Gensanto's town or Robin Henske? Okay, I think they left, but they may have dropped their report in the chat. Um, Representative Lisa Moto or Taylor Goffey? Rep Adrian Tam of Representative? Speaker Scott Skey or Frank? Okay, thank you, Frank. May have sent his, an email, so we can drop that in um our shared drive. Senator Shaimar Lucky or Charles Wizomoto? Okay. Governor Green, Representative?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I sent the governor's newsletter into the chat so that you can all review it. I will go through the details, but give it a read. It's a nice one. There's also a well-being survey that you can take at the end that I would recommend. And then in our previous meeting, there was a question about the certification of the teachers from the Philippines. So I was able to connect with the Department of Education and I'm just going to read their answer verbatim because it was really well worded. But all of the J one teacher recruits from the Philippines are certified educators who have graduated from educational programs that have been designated as equivalent in academic standards to those in the U S. They must have at least two years of teaching experience to be considered for the program. All candidates transcripts are reviewed using the National Association of Prudential Evaluation Services. And then the evaluation process for international applicants to verify their educational programs meet the U S equivalency of a state-approved teacher education program prior to the approval. And that is my summary and I'm happy to take any further questions.
Thank you. Appreciate your report for tonight. And we'll be on Congressman and Case Representative. Okay, agency reports. Do we have anyone from H D A? Okay, um, Ms. Marissa Gonzalez from Hart. I think she may have.
I'm there.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, I'll, I'll go over real, real quick. Um, again, my name is Marissa Gonzalez with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation with a quick update on the project. Um, there haven't been significant updates since my last report for segments two and three. So I'll quickly go over some key points, including a business and community meeting that we are having this week. Uh, for segment two, uh, the core system installations is at ninety percent completion and that includes the, the power cables, electrical components, communication system, platform screen gates. Um, for segment three, which is the city center section, um, the utility relocation is still ongoing uh for city center for downtown and Dillingham and expected completion by the end of two thousand and twenty-four for downtown Ibele and Kakaako and two thousand and twenty-six for the Dillingham utility relocation work. The procurement process is still underway for the city center guideway and stations contract. Um, that contract is expected to be awarded this year. Um, lastly, the business and community meeting that we're having this week, hard on our contractors, invite the public um to a Webex meeting that we're having this Thursday, April twenty-fifth at one P M. You can join and learn about the updates on the projects, including the lane closures and public impacts in the city center segment. To join, you could just visit our Hart webpage, project webpage at Honolulu Transit dot org. I also posted the information in the chat room, chat box. And you can find the meeting link in the front webpage um under business and community meetings. Um, for general information, again, just um go to our project webpage. And you can also, for questions, you can email info at Honolulu Transit dot org or call our project hotline, eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Marissa Gonzalez, for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Border Water slide? Okay, announcements. We have the industry charity walk on Saturday, May fourth that starts in Magic Island. Website's on air. Police Week, March on May thirteenth, they had a presentation in February. So that's going to be on, on May thirteenth, liquor commission public hearings. We have them listed here. We also have um the website in case you want to see establishments that are up for hearings. We have our social media accounts. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. And our next action committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May ninth. And I think that concludes our meeting. Meeting adjourned.